Lakeville Select Board enacted as the Wager Personnel Board as needed. Lakeville Police Station 323 Fifth Street, August 29th at 6:00 PM. Please ask if anybody is recording the meeting and announce the cable is present. If you want to do it, you can do it. It's up to you. You know, because it's available right online, right away. Okay, first thing on the agenda is the Select Board announcements. Even with the recent rain, most of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, including Tana Lakeville, is currently under drought phase. Residents are encouraged to practice water conservation in order to avoid overstressing our water resources. Efforts to minimize the water uses now ensure that essential public health and safety, environmental needs can continue to be met. Do you view an informational flyer regarding how to, you can conserve water, you can visit the town's Facebook page or the town's website under News? The other thing that should be mentioned here that we're very concerned about forest fighters, so make sure, please, be careful out there and don't be throwing cigarettes out the window. We appreciate that. Fire chief would appreciate that. The only voting for September 6 primary will be held at the Old Town House at Two Precinct Street, beginning on August 27th and ends on September 2nd at 12:00 PM. For times, please go to the town's website under News tab. 350 letters of past due dog licenses have been mailed out. Please contact the town clerk's office. You receive one of these letters but are no longer own the dog. There are some vacancies, positions available on the Cable Advisory Committee, the Open Space Committee, the Capital Expenditure Committee, the Master Plan Implementation Committee, the Energy Advisory Committee, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, and there's also, I believe, a new opening on the Conservation Commission. If you would be interested in volunteering in these groups, please submit a letter of interest to the Select Board's office by mail or email. Two exciting events that we have in September are the Lakeville Lions Family Fun Festival, which is on September 17th from 2 to 4, and it's at the property on Main Street. It includes food and music and fun for the children and so forth and so on. It's a great event. The second one is the Lakeville Lots Festival, which is on October 1st at the Old Town House in the library. Once again, these are two terrific events and we encourage you to attend those events. Next on the agenda is the Town Administrator's announcements. I'm sorry, did you have something?
I don't have anything.
Oh.
Okay.
I don't either.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm very pleased to inform the board that work began on the fire station today. Long last, this is, you know, sort of basic reconfiguration, as you know, that's intended to buy some time as we move toward the fire station project, but it's long been long desired and needed in fire and it's good to see it going. Reading to scope out granite applications for the fall, we have a number of potential projects in mind, but they generally include green communities projects, ADA for the first time with the ADA plan, and this year's community compact round. The town will experience several positive financial benefits from the state's adopted budget, that I just make sure that the board and public know. The Free Town Lakeville Regional School District voted last week to reduce our assessment by $121,533 as a result of additional state aid. In addition, our estimated cherry sheet revenue is $243,485 higher than initially planned, due largely to additional smart with reimbursements, aiming for a positive financial outlook heading into the fall. The town's natural hazard mitigation plan, which was approved by the Select Board on August 15th, has been posted on the town's website. Our residents are encouraged to go to the Town Administrator page for this important guide to potential natural hazards faced by our community. We received positive feedback regarding the first of our Welcome to Lakeville Town Government videos, which focused on Town Hall. The second video focused on the police station. That'll post within the next week or so. I've begun to work on some concepts for employee recognition ideas. My focus is on acknowledging performance and behavior that reflects the town value statement with some type of ceremony at the end of the year in concert with our holiday lunch. There'll be more to come as this develops, and of course, I'll inform the boards as we go along. The next regular meeting of the Select Board will be on September 13th at 6:00 PM, this time at the Lakeville Library.
Thank you. A couple of other things I think that, you know, should be mentioned, Ari, as far as the state budget is concerned.
Yeah.
Thanks to Senator Rodrickson.
Yes, absolutely.
Representative Boal.
Yeah.
We received $100,000 to be used to upgrade the playground at Esselwamset. Now, that's not gonna do it all, because we know playgrounds are very expensive. So I would suggest, Superintendent, you know, we try to get some type of committee together to get some input and figure out, you know, what it should be. And then the town is willing to use some of their ARPA money to fund the difference, reasonable amount of money, to fund the difference. So this is an exciting project, because that hasn't been updated in years. So we should be excited about that.
I actually have a meeting with Kara Lanza this week to talk about that a little bit.
Okay, good. Thanks, Kara. The second thing is that we received $30,000 for the COA, for the design services, for an addition onto the COA center. We already have the money available to do the feasibility study, which is gonna start sometime in the next month or so, I would imagine, to look at actually what the requirements are. But this will help us, you know, do some of the design services to identify what the addition is gonna look like, so that's some exciting news as well. And then, of course, you know, I think we talked about the APC money that we received, you know, the $250,000 for mitigation, which is given to Serped, and that process has started. So we're very fortunate to have our state senator and rep support these projects for us. Thank you. Okay, we have a presentation at 6:15, so we're gonna wait till 6:15. There's a couple of things here on the agenda that, one of them I'd like to move up, so the member of the Park Commission doesn't have to hang around for a long time to get his project approved. So number eight on the agenda is to discuss a possible vote to assign ARPA funding to the Ted Williams Camp Tennis Courts and Project. So you, Mike, wanna give a summary of that?
Why don't you, Mike, why don't you talk about the project now, explain why we need to have ARPA money funded?
So we had a budget set.
For the record, that's Mike Smith from the Park Commission. It's all right.
We had a budget of around $24,000 last year to do the tennis court. We received bids for over 40. So this year, I was instructed to get more bids. Because of prevailing wages and the cost of everything else, we're finding our bids much more money than the 24. So after doing the bidding process, we found a bid for $44,785, which is embedded. So I'm asking for the Select Board to approve the ARPA funds for the total amount and not split it up, because then I think we gotta do a town meeting, ARP on it, and we'd really like to get it going.
Yeah, the situation is, Mike, it explained that, I believe, the number that we approved at the annual town meeting was $28,000. And the thing that, you know, we wanted to make sure that the DPW director and the Park Commission review this, and we wanna do it right. And so in honor to do it right, you know, we're gonna need the additional funding. But it gets complicated when you've got ARPA money and town money involved, so we'll take the town money and use it for another purpose, you know, later for the Park Commission. So I will entertain a motion to approve the use of ARPA money for the tennis court project for the amount that we gotta get there.
$44,785.
Thank you.
Second?
Any discussion? Fellows in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All set, Mike? Thank you. We appreciate all your work. Okay, since we still got five more minutes, why don't we go down to number nine, which is review the surplus property list, a possible vote to declare the items on the list as surplus. As the board knows, that the town has been in the process of cleaning out our old stuff. And we had a couple of storage containers, we had actually three storage containers down at the Town Hall. Two of them have been completely cleaned out, and we have one that's left and has a bunch of stuff in there. And all the stuff is very, very old. So in summary, there's in there. So first of all, the town has declared surplus, and anybody given the opportunity that wanna purchase this, they certainly have a right to do that. If nobody goes forward to purchase any of this stuff, then what we do is then we throw it away. So there's 26 assorted, very old file cabinets, most of them difficult to open. There's three large brown desks with attachment. There's one eight-foot blue wooden table, one five-foot blue folding table. There's 10 folding chairs, one 12-foot motorized projector screen, and then there's, when we did the police department, we replaced all the police department with new file cabinets, so there's 26 assorted file cabinets. So I'll entertain a motion to declare this property surplus, and then we can auction it off. Over to the next.
Second?
Any discussion?
Just real quick, the 26 assorted file cabinets, are these the same that are listed at the top?
No. It just happens to be 26, four times.
Awesome, okay.
Okay.
Lot of file cabinets.
And... Fellows in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll probably do number 11.
Number 11 is discuss the request from the MBTA Advisory Board, possible vote to appoint a designated representative to town of Lakeville.
So I don't know why it's coming up as vacant, because I go to those meetings.
We can certainly inform the mayor that there's a meeting if that's.
Yeah, I don't know if I need to be reappointed, but I've been to all the train meetings with safety stuff, all the MBTA community stuff, so, you know. I thought we did, don't you? Yeah. We appointed you. Yep.
I guess, since Tracy's not here, we should probably check with Tracy, and if we have not appointed.
Go ahead.
We'll just make the approval.
We'll make the appointment on the 13th.
Tracy provided me with the information in the first place.
I make a motion that we appoint Leah Cavian as our representative to the MBTA Advisory Board.
What's the date, N-Bay, please?
I don't know.
I don't know what.
That's why I wanna ask Tracy.
It's annual, I believe. I'm just thinking annual. July of 2015.
Why don't you say annual? Okay.
Yeah.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Fellows in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Keep it close.
Okay, we'll go to number 12, the discuss future Select Board's meeting. This has been a challenge over the last couple of months. So these are the dates that we hopefully all agree on. So it is September 13th, September 29th, October 11th, starting at 5:00 PM, October 24th, October 7th, October 21st, December 5th, and December 19th. Anybody have a problem with those dates? Okay, those are the dates. Okay, I guess we're at here. Okay, item number five, three, is the presentation of Watermark on Associate Elementary School renovation project. We are very fortunate that, I know it was about a couple of years ago, I think we started this process, from our superintendent, Rick Maderos, and Kara. And that we applied and we were very fortunate to be approved by the MSBA for this project. And we're gonna give you an overview of what that project is, how much it's gonna cost, and what our reimbursement is. So the first thing, I guess, we should do, new superintendent, Alan Struggs, you probably should come up here, if you can, along with Kara. We'll just pull a chair over there for you. I don't know if you wanna come up too, it's up to you. We got another chair over here. Oh, thank you. And Kara Lee is the Director of Finance for the Regional School District. And.
Yes.
Sir.
My name is Joe Spangenberg. I'm with Watermark. I'm the owner and project manager for the window and door replacement part.
Okay, and I think we have somebody else up there?
We do. We have Greg Hill from Slam Collaborative. They're the designer.
Okay.
Fortunately, Greg had a COVID issue this week and was unable to attend in person.
Yeah, we had a few of those, too. Okay.
Okay, so just to summarize the discussion we're gonna have tonight, we'll do a brief introduction of the project team. I'll talk a little bit about the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program, and maybe answer some questions folks might have about that. And then Greg will talk a little bit about the existing conditions that drove the need to replace the windows and doors. And he'll also talk about the scope of work that is included in the schematic design that's been completed to date, and discuss a little bit of the technical aspects of the new door and window improvements that are to be performed. And then after that, I'll talk a little bit about the highlights of the project's scheduled milestones, et cetera, and the summary of the costs. So just as an introduction of the players, obviously Mass School Building Authority, the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District, including Kara and Alan, Rick Maderos, and Greg Goodwin. Those are the folks from the district. And then for the town of Lakeville, Ari is representing the town of Lakeville. Obviously, this is a little bit unique in that the district doesn't actually own the building. The building is owned by the town of Lakeville. Watermark, as I said, the owner's project manager. And then Slam Collaborative, they are the designer. So just a brief discussion about the Accelerated Repair Program. I'm assuming everybody's familiar with the Mass School Building Authority, and I don't have to go into any kind of description.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily?
We are, but the audience may not be.
So the Mass School Building Authority has been charged by the state to basically fund and manage, oversee, school construction, new construction and renovations throughout Commonwealth. They have two main programs that they work through. One is their core program, which is for the larger projects, the large renovations, the new construction, tear downs and replacement of schools, et cetera. And then they also have an annual program that they call the Accelerated Repair Program. The Accelerated Repair Program, referred to often as ARP. ARP includes specifically only roofs, doors and windows, and boiler systems, and that's it. That's all that they fund. So the process for getting into the program and the selection, it's the same for the core as it is for the ARP. The city or town or district would submit a statement of interest and identify the needs within the specific facility that they would like to get funding for. And then the MSBA goes through their process of ranking those statements of interest based upon what you would expect for a number of different criteria, and then they invite a city or town into the ARP program to go ahead and move forward with the improvements that they were intending to do. So MSBA is part of that process. They identify a reimbursement rate, and it, there's some detailed guidance if anybody has more question about it, but in general, it starts with a number of 31%, and then is increased based upon a lot of, mostly income and financial criteria that's related to the town and the occupants of the town and the property, et cetera. And they develop a reimbursement rate. In this case, it's 53.53% is what they came up with for this project. As far as what's funded and not funded, they have a very strict interpretation. Again, it's roofs, windows, doors, and boilers. This project is windows and doors. So anything that is touching the window and door could potentially be eligible for reimbursement. So if there were a lintel or masonry improvements that were necessary in order for the window or door to be installed and to work properly, that would be an eligible cost. But a cost that would be ineligible, for example, would be repointing the entire side of the building, repointing the masonry and doing an improvement beyond what is specific to the window and door project. And their guidance is basically that, that's as detailed as they get. So that is the MSBA, the ARP program in a nutshell. If anybody has any questions, we'll do a question and answer session towards the end. Greg, if you could go ahead and discuss the next few slides about the existing conditions and then also the work that's proposed.
I'm sure, and it's crazy if I'm wrong, that people aren't familiar with the Esselwamset Elementary School. Do I need to get into too much detail of the history?
No, you don't have to, there's, thank you.
As a general overview, you can see by the plan to the upper right, it's kind of subdivided into many different sections of construction, starting from the original G building, which was built in 1949, the two-story, and then expanded outward through 1954, building F, 1965, building E, and then finally with 1987, A through D, with the gymnasium and the current address today. That's what's created the two interior courtyards and at the school. So we'll just go forward. So the question is, why does this building need new windows? Can we move forward to slides? I mean, the first reason is just age. I know 35 years old is not terribly old, but for windows, it's on the auto limits, and then the oldest windows in the building are 57 years old and are only single glazed. As you can see from these photos, it's a lot of deterioration, just not at the trims, but at the sealants. See a window fogging, which is an indicator of glassy ceiling fail. And then, most importantly, the curb windows do not meet the current codes, either in terms of thermal efficiency or safety. Right now, the code prescribes any window or building in a zone that has a higher, has a wind speed of 140 miles per hour or higher, is essentially a hurricane windborne debris zone. And right now, this school is in a zone where it's 147, something miles per hour, which means that if there's a high wind event, it can pick up debris, crash it through the window, and, you know, potentially injure people inside. So the code does require special laminated glass that's impact resistant to prevent these sort of high, these high wind debris events. My apologies. Going forward, the replacements windows would, of course, need thermal efficiency. They would have a low coating, which would minimize, you know, ultraviolet light and infrared radiation, the sort of heat gain. It would be laminated, of course, so, once again, for safety, to prevent those windborne debris events. And... And of course, you know, aluminum, they have the same, they pass all of the code requirements that are necessary for the product. Part of this project also would have new window shades. Some of the windows in the building are missing window shades. And otherwise, the windows would replace two similar operability, so if there's operable windows now, we'd replace them with operable windows and new shades and the whole, everything that comes with the window itself. As for the doors, most of the doors are hollow metal. If you walk around, you'll see that they're in poor condition with high, you know, signs of rusting and deterioration. The new doors would be aluminum framed with FRP, which is fiberglass reinforced plastic, which are highly durable. They don't dent, easy to clean, and they last a long time. Most importantly, they'd also have pantacarware and be provided with door contacts, which most of the doors the building doesn't currently have. So that's important, because if any door is propped open for any reason for, you know, a certain amount of time, it alerts the school that that door is open, and they know that they need to go close it, whether it be, you know, 2 o'clock in the afternoon or 2:00 AM on a Saturday morning. That's a very important safety feature. And then on top of that, all of the glazing would be laminated safety glazing, once again for the windborne debris events, but also just for any kind of forced entry events, which will delay anyone from entering the building because of the laminated safety. So that's an extra safety feature. And I can answer more questions at the end if this is not clear too fast.
Yep. The one item I'd add is, we've had some initial discussions with police and fire and the building commissioner regarding safety and security, that obviously need to be, issues that need to be incorporated into the design. And they will be involved as we get further into the design details to make sure that we have their input as well. All right. Just as an overview of the schedule, the MSBA invited the district into the ARP program in February. The schematic design was completed on June 27th and submitted to the MSBA for their review. There's a meeting on August 31, where they would essentially give approval of the schematic design, which is fully expected. It's more of a formality than any kind of a discussion of whether it should be approved. From there, the 100% design is to be completed around mid-November, and that coincides with the town meeting, which is anticipated November 14th. Project would be bid in December. And then a funding agreement would be established mid-January with the MSBA. Construction contract would start mid-January, but there are long lead items for the windows and doors, obviously, submittals, et cetera. It's gonna take up quite a bit of time, so that the target right now is to try to do this project in 2023. It is a challenge, to say the least. The fab delivery timeframes are moving around, and it's possible that they may move in our benefit over the next three months as the project is bid, but it's, there are challenges within the schedule. I guess I'd leave you with that. All right? And as far as project cost, the total project budget is $4.22 million, and as I mentioned, the reimbursement rate is 53.53%, which then results in an MSBA funding number of $2.26 million, and the district and the town funding the remaining $1.96 million. So that's an overview of the costs. And that's about it for the formal presentation. If anybody has any questions, we'll do our best to answer them.
Ask some questions. Oops. We love the board goes first. Okay? Thank you. Going back, Greg, I don't, going back to the window that's being proposed, can you go back to that slide, please?
Please, sir. A minute. There you go.
And I guess I'll ask the superintendent and Kara, has this window been reviewed with the staff? Are they happy with this proposed window that's being proposed? Maybe you can't answer that question, Alan. Greg?
So.
Go ahead, Kara.
Our Director of Facilities, Greg Goodwin, has been involved in this project.
Oh, okay.
And the Principal, Bethany Pennault, she was involved in the very early stages of the discussion, and also when the designer and OPM have been present on tours of the building. So I do think that there is a consensus as to the style of the window, from our point of view.
Okay, so the staff is aware that this is what's being replaced?
As far as.
Talking about the teachers and so forth.
Oh, the teachers? I'm not sure that they've seen this.
Because there's been a lot of problems with those windows in that building over the years, because we've had different additions and so forth and so on. I think there's at least three or four different types of windows, you know, in that building today, so.
Right. The principal is aware of the window style. The principal is aware of the window style, and so is the director of facilities, but I don't know that I would extend that to the teachers at this very time, due to the timing of the design happening more so towards the end of the school year in June and then further discussions this summer.
Teachers will be more concerned about safety?
No, we're all concerned about safety. At the same time, they're also concerned about opening the windows still.
Exactly. So that's going to be what their focus is rather than anything else. So, you know, we certainly can put it out to them, but I don't see any issue.
So the question, I'm looking at that window, so that's the window for the whole building? Everything?
So I'd like to clarify that. So that's a window, just another project, that's not going to be the style that's placed in your school. So the design intent will be to unify the school with one type of window, where there are currently like many different styles, to paint homage to the 1949 historic building with the operable window on the bottom and then the mountains on the top. So it's going to look very similar to what you have now without that sort of polycarbonate upper panel. So this is just an example of what a window might look like new, but it's not the window for your project.
So what's the window for our project going to look like?
It's going to look very similar to the 1949 building, which has the operable window on the bottom, and then the upper panel has the sort of subdivided mountains.
Picture that.
So it's going to have a sort of look to it.
Okay. I certainly would like to see what it's going to look like personally. That's me, but.
So the one thing I would, and there'll be some additional details as we get further into the design, the one thing to remember is that the, as the owner, we can't dictate the actual manufacturer of the window. So we can put out the specifications for the window, but the actual, the specific manufacturer is selected by the contractor based upon the design requirements and the specs.
Right. But you can make those specifications so specific that you can guide them to a vendor?
That is problematic because your pricing tends to go up when you get too specific about it, but that's where the experience that SLAM has, having done numerous projects, they have the specifications set up properly so that. Greg, I don't know if you want to add to that?
Yeah, we have to supply three manufacturers, and the three manufacturers we supply are pretty good. It's going to be EFCO, it's going to be Conneer, and Graham are very reputable. And they essentially do, you know, the same kind of windows.
Okay, so you can recommend three vendors?
Right.
Or you said you couldn't?
No, you can recommend three within the specification. You have to have three that can meet the spec. So they're identifying three within the spec, but any manufacturer who could meet that specification would be able to bid on the project.
Okay.
Question with that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So will we know by the town meeting what the window will look like and what's the chances that's going to be the window that actually gets put on the building?
The actual window won't be known until the bids come in and you select a contractor. That's when you'll know the actual window, the manufacturer, et cetera.
You can put out the bids on the front of your file. But you have a spec of what the window is supposed to look like?
Exactly.
Right? So the contractor can't say, well, I'm going to do this or do that. Contractor has to have a spec that says this is the window that we want, it's been designed and we want installed.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Do I assume that these windows can open?
Yes.
Okay. I assume these windows will have screens?
On the inside, yes.
Okay. All right. Can you go back? Another slide, please.
Unfortunately, I have to move forward and go back.
Go back to the window that's all deteriorated.
Okay. Stand back.
So actually, go back to the, see that picture right there?
Yeah.
That's the one I'm talking about, right there. Yeah.
The windows will look, will have that same kind of aesthetic, but it'll be brand new, and it'll have the foggy, and it'll have that polycarbonate top on it. It's going to be a brand new window, but with that, a similar design aesthetic to that.
Okay. So looking at the, you said that there were certain things that aren't covered by the SBA?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Are those, all those windows on the right, all the sashes and everything all covered?
Yes. And Greg, I don't know if you want to elaborate a bit on that. I see the deteriorated wood trim, sealant, et cetera. That's all part of the project.
It's window related, yes, it will be covered.
Right.
Okay. What is it going to be replaced with?
Which element?
Any trim? Any of that?
Yeah.
With new, so for the historic building, 1949, it'll be with new prefinished metal, but it'll have a similar kind of historic molding to it, whereas the more modern buildings will have a more angular, more modern trim to it. They'll be both prefinished metal of the same material as the window, which would be aluminum.
Okay, so there's no wood trim? None?
No.
At all?
Only on the inside.
Only on the inside?
For the 1949 building.
Okay. All right.
Same around the doors?
Right, yes.
Looking, I'm very concerned about security, Alan, you as well. Looking at the doors of the existing building, I went over there and looked at all the doors today. If you go and you look at some of the doors, they have these big pane glasses of windows, and then they have a door on the backside of the building.
Yeah.
Are we going to continue with those panes of glasses? Are we going to eliminate the panes and just have a door?
Greg, Greg.
Pardon me?
Greg can answer that.
Okay.
Do you have some of the side lights on each side of the?
Yes, that's what he's referring to.
The side doors and the doors in the back near the playground.
Well, my recommendation would be for the lower panels to put that FRP panel in there, which is that kind of high durability, you know, high impact resistance panel. But for the upper lights, if you put the laminated safety glazing, that provides a lot of impact resistance, and it can't be punched through. So it's going to stop anyone from, you know, kicking through that panel.
So it's laminated safety glass around any of the doors?
Correct.
All right. The, you mentioned briefly, Greg, about security, contacts for the doors themselves. What additional security is going to be added for the doors in the building?
That is the primary one, and I think most of the doors have card readers?
Pardon me?
Card readers.
Yeah.
So, if I may ask you something about that?
Sure.
So when we started doing this project, one of the things, the elementary school at this time, the only security system on that building is for the office, main office in the building. The doors on the building are not ours.
Don't tell us too much, okay?
No, tell them that. So as we go, they're going to add, they're going to add contacts. We're going to expand our security to the doors. And when they spoke of adding that to it, along with its contacts, to let us know if a door is open for an extended period of time, it allows us to be able to notify the office or the office is notified. They let a teacher or staff on the wall and check that. We're going to add keypads to make our security easier and what we're going to do as we get in and out of the building as well.
So is that part of the project?
It is.
That's part of the project, included in the, part of the project?
Yes. Card readers and keypads, yes.
Okay. All right. Anybody else got questions? I got questions on the budget, but anybody else have any questions? Yes?
I think Noel, we're all really for residents. I want to echo what he was saying about the windows opening, because in Falmouth, they had a horrible problem with the high school by replacing the windows. You say the lower part will open?
Yes.
And what I'm getting at is air quality. And I just, I hope that air quality is taken into consideration because it became a sick school, and it was, it was a horrific period. There were teachers and students were getting sick because the windows didn't open at all. I mean, the lower panels opening is better than nothing, but is there some kind of air quality check system in place to make sure the air is circulating through the building?
I want to say that's a different issue. Greg, do you want to answer that question as best you can, with the air handling units as well?
That is a different issue. The windows will be open, and it's, there'll be multiple windows in a room.
You'll be able to open them.
You will be able to open, and you will be able to, you know, sufficiently.
And the boardroom just had a question?
My just, my only question was the, just the alarm system and, you know, security piece of it, and that was answered. Thank you.
Yeah, the only thing I just want to go back to is making sure that we can provide residents coming to town needing, you know, information, a lot of information on it.
Well, somebody's going to have to give an overview of this project at the town meeting, so whoever that is, I hope it's Kara.
Maybe we can do a whole.
Ari or whatever, but somebody's got to give an overview of what the project is so people understand, you know, what we're doing, what we're buying, and how much we're getting reimbursed for. I do have a question, and please don't get upset about this. For a window project in a window project, for a door project in a window project, the design services are 15%, which seems high to me, especially with the timeframes that we're talking about here. So I'm going to always say that question.
So it's actually less than that, it's 8.9%. The number you see at 15% is actually the MSBA's, this is the form that you're looking at, is the MSBA's total project budget spreadsheet. They include that amount as a threshold or as a basis, saying 15% is actually what they would expect to be on the high side. So the number is 8.91 for the design?
Okay, that's good. Glad to hear that, Kara.
That's correct. Yes, 8.9%.
So then 9%, we can reduce that by 30%? That number?
The design fee?
Yeah.
You'd like to reduce that another 30%?
Well, I mean, if we're not going to spend it, why would we fund it?
No, no, no. The funding amount is the 30117.
Pardon me?
The funding amount for design, it's not the 506. Again, that's a benchmark number that is in the spreadsheet from MSBA.
Right.
The number that is being extended is the estimated budget on the left-hand side. And the designer fees are identified starting on line 20.
The design fees really have two components. The first is line two, the feasibility portion of 61,811.
Thank you.
And the second is right under line 27. It reads as 239,367. The total of those two figures is the true design cost for full construction on this project.
Which is?
Which is $301,178.
Okay, I got it. Yeah, okay. And the, and the OPM fees.
The OPM fee is 15,000 on line one plus 306,502, I believe, for a total of 319,502, or 9.5%.
If the design services are 8.91%, and the OPM is 9.45%, am I wrong on that, or is it less than that?
No, that's correct.
Why is the OPM higher?
We are still in the process of negotiating that fee, to my knowledge.
We are in the process of negotiating.
With the OPM.
Okay, so when would that be addressed, Ari and Kara?
Very soon, next week.
There's a deadline to get the request into MSBA, and there's an interest in the part of the district and the town in putting in the, you know, the largest application we could, which would maximize reimbursement, potential reimbursement. However, Kara and I have both been working very hard with the designer and with the OPM, if it numbers, you know, brought down. I believe the original designer fee was how much higher?
So it was $17,400 higher than the current.
I'm sorry, you said?
We were able to shave the design fee down by $17,400.
Okay.
We're working with a watermark on the.
Okay. Anybody else want to say anything? School committee members, I see you. Excited about this project?
Steve Sylvia's school committee.
Could you please stand up because we are glad to hear you? Thank you.
Steve Sylvia on the school committee, just maybe a question for the MSBA in terms of utilities impact in the future, if there's savings or sort of numbers that they've got from other projects they've done in other districts or cities or towns, like this being for your oil or heat.
Good question.
That's an excellent question. I know that the whole.
You're very credit for some of that.
Yeah, absolutely. I know the whole purpose of an ARP program is to focus on energy efficient and cost-saving upgrades, so I would imagine they'll have some information they can share for the town meeting.
We'll speak with MSBA, and also SLAM may be able to come up with some information to support them.
That'll be good to track, too, for our green communities supporting.
Sure.
The other thing that's important, and I've mentioned this both to Greg and Kara and Alan, that next year's project, we ought to try to submit for replacing the boilers at Asmawza, because those things are old, and they fail, we're in big trouble. So we got to get going on that if it's a possibility of submitting now, so.
Absolutely.
I don't know when it is, when you submit, Kara.
So typically, they release in the spring, so.
Right, okay. All right, thank you. Anybody else have any other questions? Stand up, please, Sheri.
I'm the president of the school committee. I'm the president of the school committee. We had four of us, I think, here tonight, but not necessarily the administration. Thank you very much, Sharon. Helping us with this project, getting it started, and Ari, I'll work with Kara. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Sheri.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Will you thank you for your presentation, and we look forward to the next steps here, and we'll be ready for town meeting. Oh, one more question. The, we got to get the bond council to review the article for town meeting, so we're working on that, Ari and Kara.
Sure.
And the treasurer, because this is going to be coming from the town of Lakeville, not the region.
That's correct.
We already have draft language, we're just waiting for the town council to have some.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On the next item, the board has a revised schedule for the town meeting?
Yep. Okay, next on the agenda is to discuss and possible vote to schedule the November 14, 2022 special town meeting and open the warrant. I'll entertain a motion to schedule a special town meeting on November 14, 2022, at a Pontefort High School at 6:30 PM, and open the warrant, and the warrant will be open as of today, and the warrant will close on September 22 at 3:00 PM.
22nd.
Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a schedule here that, of what is going to happen as far as the requirements for the special town meeting. And as I said, the meeting is on, will be on November 14. We just opened the warrant. We'll be closing the warrant on the 22nd, and on September 29, the board will be voting on the articles to put on the warrant. And after we do that, then we'll send the articles to town council for review. And then October 11, the board will vote on the final warrant, and the legal ad in the paper will be October 24, and the warrant posting October 24. And the warrant review will either be October 24 or the first meeting in November. Anybody have any questions on that schedule?
Is that going to be posted somewhere, or you need to kind of write it all down?
Oh, it's all posted, yeah.
It's all posted.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
The only thing I'd like to mention about the legal ad, I would hope that we're going to consider putting the legal ad in our new Nemasket newspaper, because they've done an excellent job the first two weeks, and it's being well distributed, and considering in the special times, we have standard times. And considering in the special times, we have standard times, we have very few people that, uh, have the standard times anymore. And I think this is really important that we do this. So we might work, you gotta find out what their schedule is ahead of time. So we make sure we have enough time to, to get it in the paper. And I don't know what the requirements are. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay. All right, uh, next on the agenda is the, uh, presentation by problem properties and working group. I believe Christina is going to head up this, uh, discussion.
Good evening. So at the request of the select board and, um, as a result of a number of blighted properties being brought to the attention of town staff, town administration established a multi-departmental working group intended to evaluate the town's current process for addressing abandoned and otherwise problem properties. Uh, for the purposes of this initiative, a problem property is characterized as including violations of zoning, building, health or sanitation and, and fire codes, um, and often presents itself as a health hazard or public safety concern. The goal of the working group, um, the goals of the working group are to improve the health and safety of Lakeville neighborhoods and to bring all properties in town into compliance. Uh, the group, which includes myself, the town administrator, the building commissioner, health agent, fire chief, town planner and treasurer collector, began its work in April to identify enhancements to the town's current bylaws that could strengthen our ability to conduct code enforcement. Uh, the working group has identified the following categories of properties that has prioritized its work primarily around the first two. Uh, abandoned buildings, junk and blighted properties, unsafe, unsanitary occupied buildings, old farm and rural properties, unkempt commercial properties, um, and lodging houses. Uh, the group decided to take a multi-phase approach to this issue in order to ensure maximum return on the shortest possible timeline. Uh, in the coming months, we intend, we intend to develop a comprehensive problem properties bylaw for submission at spring town meeting, which will include, among other things, definitions that clarify abandoned properties, unkempt properties, blight, et cetera, enforcement, uh, making properties safe and recovering costs associated with that process, violations for penalties, establishing a vacant building registry and revolving funds. And in advance of such a bylaw, the working group, um, is recommending six articles for this fall's town meeting, uh, which could equip departments with important and necessary tools in the short term to address, um, problem properties. Um, I'll go through them quickly, the articles. So the first three, um, are, um, sort of centered around regulating, uh, residential use of exterior space. So the first article, um, updates the definition and storage parameters for reusable materials, restricting the amount of space, location and visibility of such materials as car parts, wood, tools, toys, furniture, et cetera. Um, the second is an article to restrict the issuance of junk dealer licenses to properties in commercially zoned areas only. The town currently issues four junk dealer licenses, three of which are in residential zones. Those, um, those properties we expect would be grandfathered in. Um, and then the third is an article amending the current general bylaw for junk, old metals or secondhand articles to include language mandating that junk dealers show commercial activity, um, as a requirement for their annual license renewal. Uh, the second category, um, of bylaw changes that we are recommending, uh, this, um, address problem properties, the first is an article accepting the provision of Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 58, which enables the town to place a lien on properties for cleanups and fines. Um, so if we, if the building commissioner ordered, um, a, a property owner to clean up or make safe an abandoned property and then they failed to do so and the town needed to do it, um, in order for the town to then place a lien on the property for the cost of us having to do it, um, we have to accept this Mass General Law. Um, the third, I'm sorry, the second article in that category or the fifth article in total, um, is an article transferring ownership of foreclosed tax title properties with a value of $35,000 or less to the select board from the treasurer for the purposes of sale via a two-thirds vote at town meeting. Uh, foreclosed tax title properties with a value of $35,000 or more would also transfer. However, there is a more rigorous screening process for them and the town would be required to comply with the RFP procedures for Chapter 30B. Um, and the reason for that is because our hope is that after the fall town meeting, the select board will consider, um, adopting an abutters program, um, which would enable the select board to offer the transferred properties at town meeting directly to the abutters of those properties. So if there's a, you know, quite a small lot that has been abandoned, um, right now, we don't have a process where we could ask the, the abutters if they wanted to purchase the property and if both of them or however many want it and then we could split it or if only one wants it, we could just sell it directly to them. The, the creation of that abutters program does not need to go to town meeting, but the transfer of the properties into your ownership does. Um, and then the last bylaw, um, is accepting Mass General Law, Chapter 148, Section 26. I think it's H and I, if I remember correctly. Uh, which is lodging and boarding house statute, um, which authorizes the fire department to ensure the adequate systems of automatic sprinklers in accordance with state building code. Um, so I'm not sure that that would do, I don't remember this year tonight, but I don't think that would do a great deal to address, um, current lodging houses, but sort of in future, um, it would enable the fire department to go and inspect the building beforehand. And that is it.
Well, thanks Christine. Uh, a lot, Christina, a lot of these problems were going on for a long, long time and the board has discussed them many times, having to do with, um, properties that aren't conforming to the bylaws and junk dealer licenses and so forth and so on. So, um, I want to thank the committee for, uh, taking this initiative and bringing it forward to the board so we can decide whether we want to put these articles on town meeting or not. And then I know there's another step, you know, probably next spring. So, um, any board member have any question?
I just had a, you know, a question and, um, you know, you had referred that the select board had, you know, initiated this. Um, I mean, I know that usually there's a process that goes through a written complaint through the, the building commissioner at that point, but, um, I don't recall us discussing this as a board before getting this information presented to us. So I just wanted to get clarification on that. I think it's a great initiative. I just was just curious as to how it got started.
I, I don't believe that it was formalized at, at a board meeting, um, but I think that there were, there were a number of conversations about specific properties, um, that sort of ignited this discussion.
And the board did put in the goals for the years, right?
Right. Um, the other piece of it is that, uh, right now, there is no sort of formal process, um, beyond a complaint coming in from a neighbor or another resident. There is no sort of proactive process, um, that the, the department heads are engaging in, including the building commissioner. And there, there are a number of reasons for that. Some of it is sort of resource constraints. I think some of it is, um, a desire not to sort of appear to be, you know, enforcing code selectively. But nevertheless, I think we all sort of generally acknowledge that, that, you know, we need to sort of get a handle on some of these properties.
The health agent was involved in this too.
Yes.
I, I mean, I do understand that there's a certain element of, um, you know, health concern for, you know, some of the situations that, you know, promote these. So as long as, you know, there's that piece of it involved and making sure that we're not, you know, addressing something on a, or a particular property that might be because of a health reason.
Right. So, um, so yes, Ed Collin was involved in, in every meeting, um, that we've had since the spring and was the one, um, who sort of brought to our attention the question of adopting Mass General Law, Chapter 40, um, which was not something that I think we previously understood that, that this was a statute that we needed to adopt in order to be able to collect these liens. Right now, I mean, obviously most of the work that Ed does is, um, sort of relative to, um, properties that are inhabited. So, you know, whether there's, you know, trash that's being sort of like piled up on the side of a house and it's attracting Furman or whatever, and the neighbors are calling to complain, that sort of thing. He has a process that, you know, sort of could potentially end with fines, but rarely does. And our intention, at least initially, is to start with sort of abandoned properties and properties that are like visibly blighted and that sort of thing.
Just speaking of that, there's a few.
Yep.
105.
Yep.
Specifically.
Well, discussed many of them. That's why the, uh, town administrator took this initiative to get this committee together to address some of these issues. It's not only that, it's, uh, all other things. We had long discussions about junk licenses and stuff like that, that they weren't complying. And I, I give the committee a lot of credit for taking this initiative and bringing it forward to the board. Thank you.
I should probably go into it with this, just, excuse me, apologies, that doesn't complain the horse before the car here. But, um, the, um, uh, carpet for the horse, excuse me. This is a pretty organic process. You know, I gathered this, gathered this group together. We laid out the problem. We discussed and identified, spent a meeting or two kind of working through that, just like, just clarifying the problem. And then the group, the, the department heads themselves, you know, were very active and engaged in coming up with solutions. And the, the staff gives a lot of credit for, for bringing, bringing this information, bringing this forward. And we've been committed to a long-term process to get us where we need to go.
I agree. I think they did a terrific job.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So I do know that, um, on occasion in the last couple of years, when EMS has gone out to some of these properties to provide assistance, whatever it is, emergency ambulance or whatever, it's been quite concerning. So, you know, we, we realized a while ago that, you know, but like you said, we didn't have a lot of these things in place. So, um, I think this is definitely a great start and this is some really great work here. It's, uh, you know, um, I have a few comments for down the road on definitions and stuff, but right now this is, you know, what we need.
This is the start of a much bigger initiative.
Yeah.
And I think the, you know, fire chief would certainly tell you that, um, part of what ties his hands, um, when they're entering a building, um, and there are issues with, you know, hoarding and that sort of thing, is just not having sort of clarity in the bylaws as far as, you know, what the definition of junk is.
Yeah.
What the definition of hoarding is, that sort of thing.
Not only that, but also fines, you know, as well. And, uh, one of the things the treasurer, and I must comment on the treasurer, that she's done a terrific job this year, uh, collecting, uh, tax titles and I, and the, uh, collected taxes are the best that I've ever seen. So, uh, you did an excellent job, your department. But there's situations where, you know, tax titles, you know, things need to be leaned as far as that instead of having to go with court. And it makes it a lot easier. I haven't go to town meeting, but prior, prior, if you were going to put a lien on somebody's property, not tax titles, but lien on somebody's property, having to do with, uh, um, junk or whatever, you're going to go to town meeting and have town meeting approve it before you can do it. Now with this, this opportunity, we can do that without having to go to town meeting, which is a big, big plus. You know, so. Okay, you all set?
Um, yeah.
Okay. I see your hand. Hold on a second, please. I told you, the board goes first. Okay? State your name and your address for the record.
My name is Noel. I live on Reservoir Row. And I'm really happy to see this getting initiated. I hope that you have language in what you do about absentee landlords. Because we've lived, we bought our house seven years ago. We've never met the woman who owns the house next door, but we have had to continually deal with their trash, scrap metal, junk. And, you know, for a while I would go into town hall and I'd complain to Nate Darling and he would be understanding, but he'd say, you know, there's only so much I can do.
Yes.
So I'm really happy to see what we're doing. Have a provision for people who own a home who don't live there. We've never met the woman who owns the house.
Okay.
She lives in Florida and has, I don't know, properties in a whole different place.
Okay, anybody else have any question? Yes, please.
Susan Spiel, 10 Valley Road.
You're gonna have to speak up, Susan. You're gonna have to come up here, please.
Susan Spiel, 10 Valley Road. Um, does this also include commercial properties as well? Or is this just residential if they're abandoned, blighted?
No, it certainly, yeah, it will include.
Tax title applies there, I think.
Yeah, it applies to all properties. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
What was that?
I said, I'm sure you know what I'm getting at.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions?
I, I just want to comment that, I mean, for a long, long time, Lakeville really was a sleepy little community and everyone knew who, you know, was doing whatever. And we hadn't adopted a lot of these because we didn't really need it. But things have changed in the last 10, 15, you know, 20 years. So now we really do need to, and obviously in other parts of the state, they've already had these problems before we did because the state actually, you know, so it's time for us now. It's not like we did something wrong or ignored it or whatever. It's just time now in Lakeville to move forward with this kind of stuff, so.
Okay, great job, Christine. Thank you. Okay, um, number six.
Okay, um.
Let me, let me please read the agenda first. Update on potential November 14th, 2022 special meeting, uh, articles.
Apologies, just.
It's okay.
Mark, could you come up, please? So, um, this is really interesting to be a quick overview of where we are. There's no actual requirement on the part of the board, um, when it comes to any of these, um, articles. Just giving you a sense of, just transparency, information, where, what we're looking at. This is looking like a pretty active fall town meeting in terms of number of articles. We have, um, uh, a number of things out there. We have drafts of, of several of them. CPC membership is one. We have a draft. I, we have, we have something to comment on that too. We have the budget submission, um, article, which, um, will clarify the submission pathway. It's something I identified as an issue last year. As you know, right now, the, um, the, the budget process in the, in the, um, in the bylaws is kind of this mishmash of different committees with the town administrator overlay the deadline of January 31st. And it's just kind of, it's, it's kind of a little bit of a mess. So just clarifies that. Um, we have a number of financial articles, um, including, um, the largest will be the Aslomson School. We also, we'll have, hopefully we'll have preliminary design for, um, schematic design, sorry, for the fire station, town hall and, um, some budget transfers and so on. We're, we're working with, um, council on, on, uh, on an article that designated the Old Town Hall as an historic site. That'll enable us to, um, apply for, uh, grant funding for the Mass Historical Commission. As you call, we thought about that last year, but we didn't have the designation in place. Mark, why don't you talk about some of the planning board ones?
Okay, um, so there's several, uh, the planning board has been working on. The first one is, um, to, uh, Mullins Rule. We have not formally as a town adopted the Mullins Rule for planning board, zoning board, conservation commission, boards that hold public hearings. Uh, so, uh, I have sent a memo to the other boards to get their, um, find out their interest. The planning board is interested in submitting an article to adopt the Mullins Rule that allows a board member to miss a meeting, but still be able to vote on, uh, the application, provided they review the minutes of the meeting or if there's a video, review the video as well as any other documentation. Then they certify to the clerk that they've done that. They can only miss one meeting though. So if it's an extended hearing and they miss more than one, they still cannot vote. So that would be one. Second one somewhat related to that is an alternate member for the planning board. So, uh, I have drafted that and, uh, sent that off to council already to be reviewed. We're trying to get this review earlier, um, so we don't have to, um, do that at the last minute. There is a clarification to off-premise signs. Uh, the sign bylaw prohibits off-premise signs. However, uh, it previously was allowed under special permit and it's still in the section under. under special permit, although it's not in the sign bylaw itself. So, so that's a kind of a little cleanup item. We are working on, currently, the planning board has discussed a couple other articles. Well, also, first off, we've already submitted the, an article to remove the Development Opportunities District in its entirety. So that's already been submitted for the fall town meeting. But related to that, the planning board has been trying to work on articles to continue to look at places where we can have, allow some additional industrial development in the community, whether it's modified DOD, or whether we specifically zone a couple, some locations in the community for the, in industrial zone. So the planning board will, is considering submitting an article for that, and then also submitting an article to modify setbacks and lot coverages for some commercial and industrial districts to allow greater lot coverages by special permit, and which they can do already under another section, but it really was originally tailored toward retail developments. And they've been kind of applying it liberally, so I think it'd be clearer to have an article to clear that up. So at the next planning board meeting, hopefully, we will finalize that language. And then we would, the last one, which probably will be deferred, given the schedule for town meeting, that's been discussed and was at the spring town meeting, is the Open Space and Residential Development Bylaw. I've met with Conservation Commission, Board of Health, in order to address their specific concerns and some other things that the planning board would like to consider. We're probably gonna not be able to meet the fall town meeting deadline on that, because I'd like to go back to those other committees with the draft. So, that'll probably be a spring town meeting.
Thank you. Okay. In addition to all those.
I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. Sorry. First thing is, it's disappointing we don't get the open space bylaw done, because it's been sitting there for six years, and it's too bad, but whatever. That's what they wanna do. I got a little confused here, because the Development Opportunity District is gonna be completely removed. So, why would the planning board be talking about developing an opportunity district for certain targeted areas?
Well, I think we're really looking for an industrial district zoning in one or two areas.
Okay, so that's what it'd be there, it's would be Development Opportunity District.
Yes.
Okay.
Realistically, yes, that's where it's gonna go.
Okay. One of the problems, the off-premise sign clarification, I don't know if you got the notification from the Attorney General's Office that they've asked for a sixty-day extension?
Yes, I.
So that's not gonna be approved till the end of October.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if that affects what we're doing, so.
I don't believe so.
But anyways, just so you know.
Right, yes.
Because the state is very picky on signed bylaws.
Yes. I think it's the additional times probably to review it as it relates to more recent decisions related to, first, speech requirements and not regulating speech through signage, so.
It's just, or they're just very busy.
But even if we do get it prepared, and for some reason, it doesn't make it by the, you know, the response, we can always put it on for the annual.
Yes, yes.
No, what I'm saying is, for them to do all that work and the Attorney General Offices, if this thing's all good, you know, that's a possibility.
Sure.
They are very, very picky on signed bylaws, okay? And ours is pretty extensive.
Yeah.
That was passed, you know, at the annual town meeting. Anyways, just, the general. Go ahead, Ari.
I have a comment.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I really am happy to see the budget submission stuff here, the, replace the January thirty-first deadline. Ari and I were talking about this last year at this time, and he was explaining to me with, really, all your experience, a career in government, why this is an important change, but being as experienced and as good of a manager as you are, you know, you said, I'm not gonna come in and try to change things, I'm gonna go through the process, see what works. I, you know, again, we just did your review, but I can't, I can't say enough about, you know, the way you're, you manage things, because you could've come in last year and said, that's it, this stinks, you guys should be doing this a different way. But that's not what you did. You came in and you worked on our schedule, and you worked with us, and you talked to us, and I'm really happy to see this change, because after all the conversations we had, I agree with you, I think January thirty-first is, you know, a little early for that first, you know, we don't have any numbers by that time, so I'm really glad we stuck to this, Ari, and that we have it on here.
Okay, Ari.
And really, what it does is, it requires, it puts more on the town administrator, since it requires the town administrator to come to the board with a budget calendar, before the end of the calendar year.
Yeah.
So the board is still has total control over the process.
Right.
So, yeah.
I'm laughing, because the prior town administrator never did the budgets on time anyway, so it didn't make any difference. January thirty-first didn't make any difference at all.
I can't tell you.
So, you know, thank you.
Okay, so, and I'm sorry, I was just, I was on my roll. The other articles that we're looking at, at least one road acceptance petition to pay what the board does tonight, the second one that we hear may be coming, but we haven't received it yet, the town clerk, who submitted a request to move that to an appointed position following, I believe, his term, so that's one that the board has considered. And then we have at least two citizens petitions, possibly a third. The two that we have in are the Recall Special Act and the Select Board Expansion. Mark, there's a third one you had mentioned to me, but I don't think I have, you found it. Retail with storage distribution business.
Yes. It was a property owner who came to the board to discuss having a retail business, but with a large, larger amount of storage and distribution, because they cannot do a lot of retailing of that product, that's the line business, so.
That was just a couple of meetings ago, right?
That's correct.
The planning board or?
Yes. And the planning board felt that that ought to be submitted by petition, that it was very specific.
Most special use, yeah.
Yeah, it was very specific to that individual, so that might be submitted.
They may get that. So, you know, we're somewhere between twenty and twenty-eight articles. Over the next few weeks, we're going to staff on gelling what we have and getting, which we don't have yet, and putting it all together and kind of, our inventory. My hope would be, it'll be at the September thirteenth meeting, we come to you with a, you know, with a more, with slapdash kind of list, and with the language falls articles as well.
That's appreciated, thank you.
Any questions?
It's a lot of work.
A lot of articles.
A lot of articles for fall town meeting. It just is. I mean, it's, it's fine, it just is.
Gonna be a three-O meeting, easily.
If I can, Mr. Chair, I, in going through all these, you know, the list of the proposed articles, you know, regarding the CPC, I know that I've had some conversations with, you know, some of the members on this, the CPC, because they have been talked about before, you know, because we don't have a housing authority and, you know, going to town meeting about removing it. So in reading the article, I got to thinking and doing some, you know, further research on it. So I just presented just the board, and hopefully, with the meeting tomorrow night, I believe you're gonna be discussing the, I haven't seen the agenda, I didn't get a chance to look at it, but I believe you're discussing the proposed amendment to the bylaw. So all I did was I just kind of reworded it in a way with what we, I guess what was presented, but keeping that in there. So I just wanted to just, you know, get that out.
I guess I'm confused. Are you presenting something to change?
No, just, just rewording the proposed amendment.
Okay, can you explain why you wanna reword it?
Well, there was some concern about the fact that the CPC, in their regulations, stipulated that the housing authority was part of the.
Not in the regulations, in the town bylaw.
No, in our town bylaw, but it was adopted through what the CPC, I guess the coalition, you know, has a place for the regulation.
This is town meeting, this is town meeting bylaw. This is what we're following. This is what this is about.
Right, I understand.
Okay.
Right. So.
Nothing to do with the coalition. This has to do with the town's bylaw.
Right, I understand that.
Okay.
So, based on what we currently have, instead of removing the housing authority piece of it, because it could be any of the board's committees, commissions, or authority that would be listed in that particular bylaw that could become non-existent. So I just tried to work the language so that if there was that situation down the road, it would be covered here, so.
But it says that.
So what is the big change here?
What's the change?
Well, if you look at the, the other one, it's, you're talking about removing the housing authority.
Correct.
Completely.
Yeah.
Versus what I said, to just basically leave it in there. I was just trying to simplify what was being proposed, that's all.
How can you leave the housing authority in there if it doesn't exist?
Well, if you read what I proposed, you would see that it just says, if the town of Lakeville has not established a housing authority for its community, then the select board, you know, shall appoint, you know, Council on Aging or, and use the language that was in the proposal, Lakeville resident with experience in the areas, so forth.
But it already says that. So the Lakeville, the Lakeville resident can be anybody. But I don't understand counsel and aging. What does counsel and aging mean?
It was just a recommendation.
What is the recommendation? What does that mean?
Well, I think that.
Does that mean someone that works at the council on aging, someone that's part of?
On the council on aging. That it could be, I guess the coalition has indicated that in the event that there isn't a housing authority, that they would utilize somebody from.
I don't care about the, I don't care about the coalition. This is the town of Lakeville, okay?
I understand that.
This, this, the town council has recommended, it gives the, the Lakeville resident, this is the way it's worded, and I think it's pretty clear and it covers everything, Lakeville resident with the experience in the area of clearance of substandard, that can, deleted open areas or provision of housing for families, elderly persons of low income, or encouraging in land assembly and redevelopment projects, including preservation, restoration, relocation of historical buildings.
Right.
What does that got to do with the CLA?
I think you're confusing the issue here. Has town council prepared?
Yes.
The town council prepared the draft that I provided you.
Okay, all right, well, I didn't, I was unaware of that. But anyways, I just basically took that language and put that in there, so, I mean, we can, you know, certainly not have the council on aging in there, but.
I should note that in town council, having, I prepared the draft in my direction. My direction was prepare a draft that removes housing authorities, you don't have one. And, yes, you wanna have some sort of nod to affordable housing, I think you probably have to have something, I said. So that's what we came up with, the language that said, you know, that you don't have a housing authority, they limit the housing authority, but that it'd be somebody who has experience in the areas of clearance for subsistence, blah, blah, blah.
Right. And I think that that, that actually comes, you know, directly from the language, you know, from the.
From the what?
From the coalition, or the regulations.
This is from town council. We're gonna follow town council with town council.
So, Lorraine, you're just basically.
Not the coalition, okay?
I'm sorry.
So, Lorraine, you're just basically suggesting that if we're changing it, we just, one option is someone from the council on aging.
But we have that option right here.
Right, yep.
We don't need the council on aging in there.
Okay, does anything say we have to change it at all from the housing authority?
No.
No, we don't have to change it. We talked about, we talked about doing it.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't see where you wanna restrict yourself that says the council on aging.
I, I'm not restricting it. I said, the, I suggested the council on aging or, and then I used the language that was provided in the draft, in there, that's all.
But you're not defining council on aging.
Then that can come out. I was just, it was a suggestion that somebody had made, that in other communities, they have utilized the council on aging as a representative in lieu of.
Okay, but we haven't voted on a CPC article yet at all, correct?
No, we have not.
Okay. I'm still wondering why we need to change it at all.
No, and I guess.
We have enough people to begin with, so.
And I'm kind of with you on that, Leah, because I.
Yeah, I was functioning under the commitment that I made to all of you last year, which is that we'd come around to this in the fall.
Yeah.
And I know that some of the supporters of CPA were hot on that as well, and want to be responsive to that. So that, so, you know, but it's obviously the board's call.
Right. But I would certainly like to, you know, have the CPC weigh in on this, too.
At their decision. Sorry.
I know, I understand.
If I, if I had something to offer, I wanna be on the CPA, so I could say Board of Select.
This makes no sense to have a council on, it's, it's, I don't understand what it means.
Well, she was just offering another area where someone could, like, represent, like the other things, someone's represented from the historical, someone's represented from open space.
But they're a board, they're a board in the committee, they're not the council on aging.
Yeah, well, right. The council on aging is different.
But I think you're just zeroing in on that. That was just something that I know that other communities have used in lieu of, you know, not having a housing authority, they would use somebody from the council on aging.
But the statement allows you to point anybody, a Lakeville resident with the experience in the areas of this issue.
That's fine.
So I don't know why you would add the council on aging in there. If it gives you the authority to point, whether it's somebody from the council on aging, whether it's somebody from XYZ.
Right, I just. Anyways, it was just a suggestion.
You made the suggestion, or discussed the suggestion?
Yes, that is my suggestion.
Okay.
So hopefully, you know, they'll discuss it tomorrow evening.
Yes.
You can stay there if you wanna yell. Sure. The housing authority, from what I understand, cannot be moved because it is a required member. It's part of the DOR, MMDOR. It says there are five required members, and it says if there isn't a housing authority, then you can appoint someone. And I know Clinton did it, it was someone from a council on aging. And there are other times that you've done that as well. But all that other language that I think you're talking about was, it's in the actual, I think it's the general law, one twenty-one B, section three or something like that, all that wording, wording was part of the housing authority, I think that's where you got that from, Ari.
So the board can live it the way it is. I really don't care. It doesn't make any difference to me, you know?
So we're a proper town council.
I don't think you're right, but that's okay.
You don't have to have the housing, you don't, you don't need to have the housing authority name in there, you need to have somebody with the expertise in housing.
Right.
Right, exactly. But you can maybe move from the bylaw, because it is a required.
That's not what town councils say.
Oh, I mean, I'm looking at the DOR regulations, obviously, considering.
I think if you have it, hundred percent required.
Well, clearly, we need clarification.
Sure.
That's fine, I'm just.
Okay. All right, that was the last one, right? We talked about pretty much all the other ones.
Okay, do we have any minutes? I didn't even notice, yeah. No, I guess we need a minute.
Okay.
Okay. All right, the, going to skip number fourteen for now, because we're gonna have a discussion of possible vote regarding retail cannabis, and since.
Number seven, yeah.
Select, I'm sorry, what?
Number seven.
Thank you for reminding me. Oh, I forgot that one. That's a big one. Okay, number seven, discuss the facilities management, considering a possible vote to approve the facilities manager job description. Number seven.
Okay, I'll kick this one off, that's all right, Mr. Chairman. So, a lot of discussion and talk among the board members and so on about the facilities going forward. As you know.
There is minutes.
Yeah. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
As you know, we have been doing what we can in the short term to get things going, but we have a decided bandwidth issue when it comes to facilities management. I've had a number of meetings, both with Nate Darling and with John Biorella, and with Frank Mooney's as well, who had. as well, who has sort of, not really fingers in facilities, but in infrastructure work, you know, that kind of thing, just trying to figure out a path forward. And we all have kind of the same observation, which is that the special act, which assigns facilities to the special services, that dynamic is probably times past, that there really needs to be dedicated management for facilities. It's also borderline inappropriate to have the person who's in charge of inspectional services managing facilities when that person has to be issuing permits on work that he's overseeing and managing. It doesn't quite make sense. So, that's an issue as well. So, per the board's direction, I guess it was in June, we've looked at this program. We developed a job description for facilities manager, and we've also looked at some other ways to kind of get through in the short term. My plan is twofold. First is that we use the non-personnel money that was added in facilities budget to get, to hire project management services, not under 30B, but under the construction on chapter 149. That allows us to be able to bring somebody on board without going to bid, as long as the project is worth less than, spends less than $3,000, less than $300,000 in project. These are all little projects we're talking about. And then go through this list, so the, and use this person's going to go through this list. I've had a couple of conversations with some people, and I think there's some opportunity there. We also are looking at the, also in the long term, we're going to look at the facilities manager piece. We have the job description for you. We go out and advertise that position. Hopefully, we'll get somebody in the short term that I say that's not as necessary as it would be in the long term, but we will move forward nonetheless, whether that person gets hired or not. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. In terms of funding, I think we have a number of opportunities as far as funding goes. As I mentioned, we have some positive news on the state budget side. We'll have new growth, and there'll be a couple of different ways that we think we can probably take care of this. And I've been talking about that, same we bring forward for the fall town meeting. So, I'll be answering any questions.
Yeah, one quick question. My apologies, because I didn't read the 2017 special act before tonight. But we don't have to repeal that, correct? It spells out that if we have a dedicated facilities manager, then we use that. If not, we can put it under inspectional services, right?
Correct.
So, we don't have to change that.
Language says specifically that service facilities manager for town buildings, unless it's separate facilities managers designated by the board of selectmen.
Okay. In the event that, I mean, I guess I had a question on the act as well, because your recommendation was that it became an administrative position versus under the inspectional services. So...
That is your unanimous recommendation.
So, is that a concern with regards to the act if, how do I put this? Because it was under the director of inspectional services, because we didn't have a facilities manager. Having a facilities manager under administration, does that affect the act in any way?
I don't see why it would. The only language about facilities manager says, "Service facilities manager for town buildings, unless it's separate facilities manager designated by the board of selectmen." If that person's designated by the board of selectmen, that's a report, probably through administration to the board of selectmen. Report directly to the board of selectmen if you had that structure, but basically, a report through me. So, that's actually more consistent, probably, than hiring another position in each shop with the act, I think.
Okay. Yeah, because that was one of the questions. But another one, you know, based on the conversations that we've had with Nate and the projects that are happening, too, you know, we've had, I think it's been mentioned before about having an assistant, you know, inspector, so that that particular individual could go out and support Nate on inspections.
Yeah, and that position continues to be funded.
Should he not be here?
Yeah.
Have we had any consideration about having that in this particular job description?
We haven't, we haven't. He has an assistant inspector position funded in his budget. And he's using that contract to some degree. I think it's a person that he has on board that's working...
Well, he has to hire people to fill in when he's not available.
Right.
Or additional services, like the past week or so that he hasn't been here, then he's hired somebody to come in that he already has an agreement with that does the special services.
Contract.
But he has chosen not to hire an assistant building inspector at this point. It's up to him. I think we've funded part of it, and he's decided not to do that.
It's really the board's call, but I do think that the inventory of projects that we have outstanding, not to mention the needs that we have to really get real about our capital program for what it looks like over time, mean that we need to get somebody who's dedicated to this role to help us, helping us to where we need to be.
I mean, it just seems to be, you know, a really important, you know, position, and I want to make sure that, you know, we get it right with, you know, looking at all aspects of it. I mean, I know that there was a proposed $75,000 a year salary, which, you know, I mean, if it was having, you know, what is it, construction supervisor license, and, you know, maybe it goes up a little bit more, but I think that that allows that particular individual to actually do some of the work versus having somebody from outside.
We, if you look at the job, so the job description, we have, and I'm trying to give it some flexibility, because I'm not super confident this is going to be, it might need to get a superstar. But I also think it is part of the salary and structure and how we pay the rest of the staff. Under qualifications, we have preferred MCPVO certification in professional buildings and trade licensing. So, you know, if we find the right person and they come along with those skills, that's fantastic. You know, if it were me personally, I probably would, I think, given the choke, given the choke point that 30B in procurement is in the organization, if I had to choose between, had to choose between the two, which one I think is more important, I think probably MCPVO, but, you know, I...
I disagree with that.
I know you do.
I already told, I already told, that was one of my questions, that I think the certification is nice, but I think the selectman's office is responsible for that. And I do think it's a requirement that it has to have a personal, professional building and trades licensing, not preferred, required. Because he can't, he can't go ahead and, I want this person to be a worker. I want this person to be able to come in, do a project, and if he has to, if he doesn't have a license, he can only do certain things. And we have to have this person have a license to do things, and that's me.
The only thing I'd say in response to Mr. Chairman is that the biggest problem we have, in my opinion, towards getting projects removed, is the bottleneck we have when it comes to procurement. It's a huge problem in the organization. We only have one person in the entire organization who's certified.
Well, you get two other people in the selectman's office, they should be dealing with that. That's me. Sorry. Not this person, the facilities manager, the facilities manager, whatever we call the person, manager. I want this person, we have...
So, can I just ask before?
Excuse me one question.
No, no, I'm asking a question. What are we talking about here? Whether this person should have the, have an MCPVO certification versus having trade certification? Is that what we're talking?
License, trade license.
Okay. And I agree with you, Rich. I think that procurement should lie within the select board's office. And if we have to send others to get that certification within the office, and, you know, I say we do it more, having more, I know that we were relying on town council for support, but if we had somebody else, you know, in the office that, you know, had the certification, I think that would help alleviate that bottleneck.
Well, it'd almost cost effective for the organization if you managed to hire somebody with certification already. But, yeah, that's fine.
I just think that, you know, the list that you just gave us here, there's, I don't know, it's probably 30 items, maybe more on this list.
Most of those are procurement issues. Most of those are procurement issues.
Right. But, you know, if you take, you know, hopefully, we're going to move forward with the fire station project at town meeting, and that's going to require a building committee, you know, to do that project. We're going to have a town hall. I don't know what we're going to do with that yet, because there's still a lot of questions on that. Whether we do it now, we do it in the spring, it's a different story, but that's going to require a building committee, you know, as well. We're going to have an opposed addition to the senior center, probably not this fall, but probably in the spring. That'll require, you know, a building committee, you know, as well. So, then all the other stuff that, you know, is already in the works, there's, oh, the DPW building, we even talked about that, you know, that's another issue. So, there's a lot here. And, you know, somebody like Nate, you know, who's done the best that he can to try to keep things together, he just physically can't do it anymore. It's just impossible for him to do it as an individual, and we all know that. And, you know, you use Nate, so, you know, like a fire station building committee. He'd be a perfect example to put him on something like that. And, you know, some of the other things, the building committee, where he knows the building code and stuff like that. But this facilities person is a day-to-day worker, and this person is responsible to make sure that the buildings are functioning properly. If there's issues that need to be done, need to be fixed, he brings it to our attention, and then we deal with it. But this position is important, but unless this person has a professional building license and trades, I just don't see how it's going to work. I mean, it's just no change, you know, and we want to make change. And we have to try it and see what happens first before we decide. And if we can't get that person, either it's more money, or we change the job description. But right now, I just think we go ahead and get this out the way with the requirement that he has to be, the person has to be a professional building...
That's the way the board directs. My recommendation is that we're, I really feel like we're looking for a facilities manager, not, you know, we're not hiring a carpenter, we're not hiring an electrician. We're looking for somebody who can manage our program. And we develop the CIP that we need, the assessment of the buildings, conditions of the buildings, cover the plan over time, and at the same time, you know, manage the procurement and implementation of the services we need to get the various jobs done.
The problem is, is we know where the problem was, was there was not enough resources and staffing with Nate's office to get these projects moving. We have electrician on...
Most of it is because of procurement issues.
Well, not necessarily.
The fire, Mr. Chairman, the fire station project itself is a great example of that. That project had to not move forward for a year and a half because procurement wasn't getting done. And we had, we needed, we needed inspectional services to put together the specs, so we could go out and put things out to bid, and we weren't able to get that done.
But if you had a facilities manager, they had a license, he could have done it.
I don't know that that's true.
Well, I don't know who the person is.
Are you saying he could have done the...
Because he could have done the work. Electrician, and a carpenter, and a plumber, and just do everything himself.
Well, we have, we have an electrician on staff that we use as needed basis. We have a plumber on staff that we use as needed basis. We have a painter on staff that we use as needed on basis. The thing that's been missing since unfortunately, you know, what happened, the carpenter that we had is no longer available to us, okay? And he did a lot of the work because he had a license to do the work. That's what I want to hire.
Well, then what I would suggest then is that you tell me to go back on this, to change from being a facilities manager to being a trades worker, a union trades worker.
Well, I have a facilities manager that has a license, that can be a carpenter, can do small jobs, and stuff like that. I don't understand.
So, it's not a facilities manager.
I don't know that we're going to find a person with either, to be perfectly honest with you, because a really good facilities manager doesn't have to swing a hammer in some cases. And a good facilities manager can probably do all the prep work for the MC, for the procurement stuff, and then just needs to touch base with either town council or, you know, our procurement certified person. But to me, I would assume that a good facilities manager can actually do a lot of the procurement stuff, and then the final step is take it and get it approved.
I'm not certain, I'm pretty sure the kind of work we talked, that you're talking, Mr. Chairman, probably at the union level, at the union position, because it would require, you know, you're talking about somebody requiring building trades, building a hammer.
Not necessarily. There's a lot of contractors out there, contractors and subcontractors out there. It could be a subcontractor that submits and said, hey, I'll do this for you, okay? And you can hire that person, just like we did with the previous guy.
That would be non-personnel. That would be contracting money. So, that's different than what we're talking about here as well. This is a position.
Yeah.
I'm trying to, trying to keep us from getting into trouble on things like, you know, collective bargaining issues for bringing people that should have been union.
What does that got to do with this manager's position? This is a non-exempt position.
If you're talking with somebody whose primary job is to build stuff, it's not a facilities manager.
No, I didn't say that. I said the facilities manager should have the capability to fix stuff.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
And in order for that person to fix stuff, then that person needs to have a license. Because he can only do certain things.
Okay.
Right?
I mean, they could, couldn't lay work under, Nate still has to issue the building permit, right?
That's standard.
We're trying to separate that, because we don't want to have the special services issuing the building permits on work that's special services overseas.
We all have to have building permits for whatever we do. That's not an issue.
We want to do a permit for them no matter what. So, yeah.
Well, clearly, I must have misunderstood, because I didn't think facilities director was going to be a carpenter or have to have MCPVO certification, so...
Well, we could just, we'll put in, "Building trades license required," and she'd be preferred. That's fine.
But I think...
Those are the board wants, is what we'll do.
I think that there's just, I guess now that we're having this conversation and fine tuning it more, that I understand where you're coming from. This is more facilities-driven, and the list that we have is more project-driven. So, I can see...
This for me is just the snapshot of right now.
Right.
And it doesn't, for example, we know there are a bunch of parks projects that are already on here that are coming down the road, which we don't, you know, and Parks Commission hasn't really gotten real yet, hopefully they will this year, about their long-range plan, and we'll be able to get that together, and that's going to require some work. You know, I was under the impression I was following the board's direction out of that meeting to come back with a facilities manager. But I understand there's a different interpretation of what facilities manager means. The board's call, if the board wants to make that license required, that's fine.
I said that right from the beginning. I said at the meeting that I required that he would have a license. And, you know, if we have a small project, you know, at the old town hall or something, we're going to replace a window, or whatever it happens to be, this person ought to replace that window. And if he doesn't have a license, then he can't replace that window. That's where I'm coming from.
And this person will also oversee the custodial work that gets done.
That's correct.
I mean, I think a great facilities director will be able to find a contractor to replace a window.
Well, why would you have to go and hire a contractor if he can do it? Why would you want to do that?
Because in my opinion, hiring a facilities manager, we're doing it not because it's a, it's a wish, it's because it's a necessity. And I don't know how much time this person's going to have to actually be working on stuff. I mean, have you seen the list? I know you have, you know, with everything that we have to get done.
And also, you know, I mean, with that, too, Leah, I mean, this is a pretty comprehensive list, and we know that. And, you know, this, there's going to be things falling off and new things coming on. But, you know, we are hitting a recession, too, so I don't want to over, you know, set ourselves up in that respect. But I want to make sure that we do get this position right. And if $70,000, $75,000 isn't enough, and it's going to be more, then, you know, I'm even open to having that conversation, if we get the right person with what it is that we're looking to accomplish here. Because I know that, you know, if we had an assistant inspector, they could do inspections and take on some of that role, too.
Nate doesn't want that, okay? We've asked him about that. I've asked him many, many times.
So, that's off the table.
I've asked him many, many times.
So, that'll...
I've asked him to.
Unfortunately, he could make it tonight, but he did make it clear to me when we spoke earlier this week, or late last week, that he feels that inspectional services should get out of the facilities business.
Right.
He feels that very strongly.
He told me that today. All right, and that's, I'm, I'm fine wherever this lands, as long as we do.
I am honestly okay saying preferred on either qualification.
I do think you're limiting yourself if you say required for any...
Right. I don't want to turn away a fantastic facilities manager who may want to work in Lakeville, because we know we don't offer, we're offering $75,000, sounds like a lot, but compared to other municipalities, it... Um, because we know we don't offer, we're offering seventy-five thousand, sounds like a lot, but compared to other municipalities, it probably isn't. So I don't want to turn away a really good person just because, you know, we need to either help them, and again, a good facilities director is going to be able to put together half of the paperwork necessary for, you know, the procurement stuff and then have to just sit down and fine tune it, which we do anyways. So I don't, I don't, I, Rich, I totally understand your point in that if we just had a person on staff that had a license, but maybe we'll get lucky and find that person.
Should be a requirement. You should see what we're going to do. I, I've insisted upon this, that, you know, I said it right from the beginning, that we're going to try to get back to where we were.
As, as chairman, I told you that, that if the board wants to make that change, then that's fine. So just the board needs to decide.
I'm not inclined to make any motion to mandate either one of them.
And I think that the, you know, preferred for, you know, the MCPPO certification, but not required, I'm okay with that. Um, but when we say professional building and trades licensing, you know, that is a broad scope. Um, you know, construction supervisor license, what, C, construction.
I'm willing to give it a try. That's what we get. I'm willing to give it a try.
What other building and trades licensing would fall under this?
Could be construction supervision. It could be, uh, carpentry. It could be electrician. It could be, it could be a number of things. It could be, you know, a number of different building and trades licenses.
Well, the other difference of hiring somebody with a professional building trade and licensing preferred, that they probably know the building code and they know some of the things that need to be done as far as specifications and stuff like that. So that's a plus, you know, too, whereas you hire somebody not picking on whoever this person is and having experience in that area.
I mean, people that have the construction supervisor license don't necessarily swing a hammer. They have, it's their supervisor.
Right.
But they can. That allows them to.
I can absolutely see this working that way. The reason, the reason I put in MCPPO certification and professional building and trade licenses preferred is because I was trying to give us range of maneuver. If the board feels very strongly that position needs to have those licenses, then let's put that in and we'll see what we get.
I say we just see what we get with our first, maybe we'll be pleasantly surprised.
Then the candidate, then, then if I get a candidate who has a license, we're going to come back to you with that candidate who has a license.
Right.
And, and, you know, I will not come back to you with somebody who doesn't over someone who does unless, unless there's something really wrong with the candidate. But you know what I mean?
Can I make a motion, Rich?
Go ahead.
No, you kind of feel like.
Go ahead. No, you can. Go ahead. Make a motion.
All right. Well, I think that, um, under the qualifications, um, I'd like to make a motion that, um, we leave the MCPPO certification as preferred. Um, and then add professional building and trades licensing. I mean, unless we want to be specific and make it construction supervisor license. All right. I'll just professional building trades license. Again, that's too broad.
I don't know the difference between a construction license and a, a, um, building trade license preferred. So I, I don't know what that means.
If I can, Mr. Chair, I know we have, um, somebody in the audience that might be able to answer that question. Um, are we limiting ourselves if we say construct, uh, construction supervisor license? Um, does that allow them to have a more broad range?
What's your name, please, for the record? I'm sorry. Hi Paul, how are you? Nice to see you.
Sorry.
Sorry. I mean, you know, I personally don't have a problem hiring a contractor either, a subcontractor to do this work. I don't have a problem with that, but we haven't been able to find that company or person to do that. If somebody has a different approach, I'm listening. But we've been trying for months, you know, to do that and we haven't been successful doing that. I mean, that's why the fire station project has been delayed. I don't want to exaggerate, but for at least nine months, you know?
Right. And that is one piece of it, but I think there's a higher level administrative piece that we're, we've been missing as well, that I think Ari's tried. So let me, all right, I'm going to start over. I'd like to make a motion, um, that we leave the MCPPO certification, um, as preferred. Um, and add, um, construction supervisor license, um, required.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay, I, um.
Did you get that?
Yep, that's fine. Um, I do have a question and, um, I don't know who can answer this question, having to do with work environment. Um, nothing talks about hours in here. You know, because, uh, facilities manager is, is on call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, potentially. You know, you have some kind of a problem or whatever. It's not spelled out in the, uh, in the job description.
It's individual or the custodian, one or the other is, you know.
What I would do then is I would put, um, yeah, just availability to be on call or something of that nature. Um, one thing is, uh, we should note if we are going to make, just by the way, John, I'm irrelevant, but he's.
Hi, John.
If we're going to require a construction supervisor's license, that is a highly sought-after qualification usually allows somebody to become a building inspector. Someone who's like at the level of Nate, which usually carries a significantly higher salary than what we've budgeted in this particular job description. So, you know, those people, um, make considerably more than, than what we budgeted for this. So if we're going to require that, I think maybe we need to circle back on the salary. Either adjust it now or just leave it blank for now and see who we get. Um, but I just, I don't know realistically if I can find somebody with a construction supervisor license at this, at this salary.
I, uh, it says plus or minus, so.
Okay. I'm okay with that. Just, just, I just wanted to be clear. Um, because like I said, it is, uh, it is a highly sought-after qualification. There are only so many people who have it.
I can tell you two or three towns that have the exact same type of person that have the license. They're paying less than what we're offering.
Right. Okay.
Just, I'm not saying we're not going to have a problem, but I'm just saying that.
Really?
I mean, I, I think it can be done. And I, I think this seventy-five is very, very competitive in today's market. That's just me. And I can tell you that the towns that are doing it, but you know.
Okay.
That's just my opinion. I think we got to give it a shot.
Oh, I have no problem giving it a shot.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion? Do you require a motionary for, um, post the position?
Um, do we need to change the, just the hours? Do we need to adjust that?
Available on call after hours as needed, as required, something like that.
I do have, um, hours may require, if you look at, at the very top, the hours may require evenings or weekends.
Okay. That's fine. I didn't see that. You're, you're correct.
Yep.
Excuse me. I missed that.
The board could approve as amended, then we can go ahead and advertise.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we all set? Any other changes? Okay. Thank you.
Do you need to approve it?
Uh, I obtain a motion to approve the, uh, final job description and, uh, post it as soon as possible.
With amendments.
As amended.
As amended.
So, as amended?
Yeah.
I'm not seconding.
Okay, I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay. All right. Thanks for that.
So we're on ten.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
See you, John. Number ten is to discuss a possible vote on the notice of intent to lay out Ledgewood Drive. Um, so there seemed to be, I mean, my part, I must say. There seemed to be a little confusion as to the process and I understand that it has been straightened out. So, um, the board needs to make a motion, uh, select board intention to lay out Ledgewood Drive as a public way. So there's a motion down there on the bottom of the page. If you could make that motion, then we'll.
Just to clarify too, Mr. Chairman, this strictly gets the process moving. There's still information we need from the, um, the applicant. Um, and I have a meeting with Attorney Shaw to see later this week to obtain that information.
Okay.
All right. I'll make a motion. I move that the select board vote its intention to lay out Ledgewood Drive as a public way. All as shown on a plan entitled Ledgewood, Ledgewood Drive roadway as-built plan. Ledgewood Estates, a residential subdivision off Pierce Avenue in Lakeville, Massachusetts, dated August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, prepared by Outback Engineering Incorporated, which plan is, which plan is on file with the town clerk and to forward this vote and the plan to the planning board for its comments and recommendations pursuant to general law, chapter forty-one, chapters eighty-one G and eighty-one I.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. See you, Paul.
Poor Paul. You've been here all night. Yeah, you can watch it on cable though.
Okay, uh, I guess we'll approve the minutes. Um, I obtain a motion to, uh, review and vote to approve the selectman's minutes of, uh, August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Are you going to?
I'm going to, uh, um, since the next item is, uh, having to do with, uh, retail cannabis applications, uh, Lorraine cannot participate because she works for one of the marijuana companies, number one. So I'm going to go down to new business. Is there anything in new business?
I do have something under new business. Let me find my papers. So, um, I can't help myself when I find, when I watch other meetings and things are said and either they're not clarified or, um, I don't know what to say. But anyways, so at last Thursday's planning board.
Can I stop you for a second?
It's old, isn't it?
It's under new business, uh.
Well, it's new for us.
It's under old business.
It's under old business.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
We had talked about it.
Okay.
All right. So does anybody else have anything?
I don't have anything under new business. Sorry.
Okay. All right. So now we're going to go down to old business, which is discuss the, uh, Lake, uh, LaBaron Company had to permit, um, as the board knows, a couple of weeks ago, I believe, at the last meeting, the board, uh, gave its opinion on the project itself and, um, some of the issues that we may have. But I think that Leah wants to follow up with a planning board meeting that happened, um.
Yeah, this past Thursday. So, um, planning board member Michelle McKegerns brought up the fact that there was in part of an agreement that the LaBaron, uh, developers had offered to build a sidewalk from, I believe it's FERNAV, down to, um.
COA.
The COA, the Council on the Senior Center. So what she said in the meeting was, but the selectmen turned it down or did away with it. I forget what she said. What she didn't say was, and she didn't even take a stab at trying to figure out why that was turned down. So for those folks who think that, you know, it was this board, well, first of all, it wasn't. It, that decision was made in two thousand eighteen by a completely, um, previous board, right?
Yeah, I provided the board the minutes of the meeting of, uh, June twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen.
Yep. Now, um, there is, you know, minutes here that discuss whatever, which like the Mr. Chair said, the meeting was June twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, but after, you know, being a selectman for a long time, you know, there's all kinds of things involved with creating sidewalks. Number one is you have to maintain them. So even if someone built one, the town is responsible for maintaining it. The town is responsible, um, for moving telephone poles. The town is responsible for engineering costs to lay out a sidewalk. So, you know, I'm really not happy that, you know, a planning board member just offers a, a tiny clip of information and doesn't fill in any of the gaps. And certainly, you know, never called anyone to find out, you know, what, what's going on. Um, or why this was done or, you know, to even discuss it and just publicly says, well, the selectman didn't say, didn't want it. So, um, you know, so anyways, so there is a whole history on the sidewalks. And if anyone wants to talk about it, you know, feel free to call us. But it's not that simple, Michelle. And you know it and we know it.
Well, I think it's important to, to understand that the, uh, the minute, I'm going to read the minute here, which is very important. The mitigation included in the original agreement was discussed. It was determined that the town no longer wishes to install a sidewalk on Precinct Street. Uh, Mr. Atari said, stated he's getting bids on the building of the sidewalk and willing to give the cash to the town in lieu of the sidewalk. Attorney, attorney, uh, Keswell, her Amy, stated the sidewalk provision could be changed in the permit modification. She will work on the mitigation with attorney Mather and attorney Friedman. It does not have to be finalized by the next zoning board of appeals meeting. Selectmen can enter into mutual agreeable host community agreement to modify the prior agreement concerning the mitigation. Attorney also will forward the selectman the accounting of, um, the two thousand hundred, two hundred thousand dollars for the senior center that was included in the original agreement as well, dated June third, two thousand and three. Um, I just wanted to point out that, um, at that time, when I became a board of selectmen in, uh, fall of two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty, I had asked, you know, what the situation was with the, uh, with that funding and so forth. And so I had requested, I was the designee by the board, uh, as far as the, uh, LaBaron project is concerned. So, uh, I had set up a meeting to discuss this issue. And I wanted to know how much the cost, it would cost to put the sidewalk in down to, um, from Precinct Street, from, um, FERN Avenue down to the senior center. And the estimate was, uh, three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And, um, I said, oh, okay. Well, we got to do something. And nothing had been done by the previous board. So it's still pending out there. And as it says here in the minutes, that the town can take a use for another purpose. Now, the GPW director looked at the cost of that sidewalk to do done. The problem is that the town was responsible for the design services. They were responsible for putting in the drainage and they were responsible for moving telephone poles. And there was a lot of telephone poles that had to be moved and it's very expensive to move telephone poles. And I forget the estimate that he came up with, but it was like five hundred thousand dollars on top of the three hundred thousand dollars. So why would we invest that kind of money, you know, in doing that? So where it is right now, it still needs to be discussed. And as you know, they're going through the process of updating their permit. And at some point, very shortly, this issue would have to be addressed and discussed with the board to decide what they want to do. But that's the story behind the whole thing.
Well, and that's my point, Rich. Okay? It took us how long to explain it? And, you know, um, if, if the planning board wanted an explanation or Michelle wanted an explanation, she could have called Ari and said, listen, I want an explanation on what happened. You don't just say at a meeting, the selectman didn't want it. I mean, that's, you know, um, that's not being a team player because there's a lot more going on here.
So, I mean, I would say over the next month that, you know, uh, there'll be communications with the developer and decide, you know, what the next step is on, what we want to do.
Right. I mean, I.
I think this gives us an opportunity to get some additional funding to do some things.
Yeah.
That, um, and not putting a sidewalk in.
So the mitigation, um, had it already been determined, because I'm just seeing, I'm just looking at this right now as we're here, but trying to get myself, um, further acclimated, but. But was there already a monetary amount for the mitigation? Or is this still something that we can negotiate?
The mitigation, going back to 2003, which I believe the board was given, was to install a water line, uh, from, uh, 1.2 miles that went from Precinct Street down to Assam Wolf's School. So they installed that all for your charge. This is when AA Will owned the development. That is 100% completed, okay? And included the senior center. It included the library, you know, as well. So that was agreed to.
No, I was just curious where you had said here that the accounting for the $200,000 for the senior center. So that, um, is that money still, like, somewhere?
That's money we've been receiving.
So the developer agreed to make a charitable contribution to the endowment fund for the town senior center, okay? The problem was that nobody defined, the selectmen didn't define, how that was gonna be paid. So when we talked to the developer, uh, we said we needed to do it by unit.
Right.
So they've agreed and they're up to date by unit. And I think we have $100,000...
Last night, I should've said it was $150, something.
$130,000. And as they build more buildings, as the building permits are built, then they pass that...
And that is the funding, that's the funding source for the senior center so far.
Right. So we'll wind up with $200,000, you know, for the senior center.
Okay, I just didn't know if that's where we were still in line with that $200,000 or if it has changed?
No, no, we got that finalized.
Okay.
That's not a problem. And then you talked about the mitigation for the, uh, for the sidewalk, and I think it was 3,200 feet, if I'm not mistaken. But there was no cost associated with it. I'm glad they didn't put a cost in because today's cost is quite different than it was 20 years ago. So, so that's the story with that.
Okay.
Um, there is a couple of other things that, clarification that, you know, that was discussed at the planning board meeting as well. As a matter of fact, that this letter dated June 3, 2023, the town allocated 70,000 gallons per day for the, uh, for that particular project, which included 386 units and also included the country club. They're nowhere near using...
They're well under.
They're well, well under because things have changed in the 20-year period as far as conservation is concerned and so forth and so on, so, um... Anyway, so that, so what was said, that they need more allocation? They don't need any more allocation. They have plenty of allocation. They're only using 14,000 gallons a day right now. So with the finishing of the project, they'll probably use about 30, 35,000 altogether. But they're not even close, you know, to doing that. So the other thing that was discussed having to do, and I don't know why this was even brought up because this project has already been approved, um, in... 2000, I forget the date, 2003 or 2004 or somewhere in there, for 386 units. And so the state has already approved that project. That's the minimum amount of their project. It can't be changed. There seemed to be a misunderstanding at the, at the planning board that they could ask that number to be reduced, which is not true. It is what it is. And they could, the only thing that the Board of Appeals now can do is approve the design of the Phase 5 and the Phase 6. That's all spelled out in the letter that I see you have there from Board Mather, okay? So, and the other thing that is talked about, was talked about having to do with safe harbor for, um, 40B projects. Three conditions for 40B projects. Number one, and everybody knows this, that you have to have 10% of your current housing in town for affordable housing. We don't even come close to that. We're at 6% and we just got our new numbers. And, uh, we're gonna be at 4%, 4.5%. So that does not apply at all. And then the other situation is that, uh, having to do with land that 40B projects are on, if it's greater than 1.5% of your land that the 40B projects are on, then you can try to stop the projects. We're not even close to that. No way, even close to that. That's, that's not, not an issue at all. And the third thing has to do with, um, that, you know, so many projects, so many units for a particular project. In our particular case, it's 250 units for a particular project. So the planning board, one of the planning board members thought that we could reduce it based on that. This is already approved numbers. We can't change that at all. Then, you know, the situation is that it's 250 units per project. So if the developer has 50 acres of land and they take the first 10 acres and they want to put 250 units on that 10 acres, they go ahead and do that. They can then subdivide that property into another lot and they can put another 250 acres, you know, on that land. So it's kind of deceiving to think that, "Oh, this project's 250." Well, all they do is they just change the LLCs and keep changing how, how they modify the A and R lots and so forth. So what I would like to see us do, and to get this clarified once and for all, I would like to see Mark Resnick talk to Town Council and please put this all in writing so we can stop this misinformation about 40B projects. It's just not true, so.
I agree.
You know, it's just ridiculous.
It can be a little confusing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anyway, so that's that story.
I, uh, I definitely agree, Rich, that, you know, and again, this isn't unique to Lakeville in any way. Um, the state is in a crisis, a house crunch. So they've made it possible for, you know, 40Bs and, you know, different types of, um, cluster and all kinds of, you know, housing to go in because according to the state, we need housing. So it is not something that the three of us at this table or the Board of Selectmen before us or, you know, we aren't the ones that make these rules, but we cannot deny housing projects if the state is saying there's a housing crunch. I mean, that's just the way that it is, so.
We just gave you a task, Mark, here outside the door.
[laughing]
Uh, we were talking about the planning board meeting having to, you went at the meeting. I know you went. Um, and they were talking about the LaBarren project and there was some misinformation that was provided at that meeting that was not correct. And we're just trying to correct those mistakes. And one of the things that, uh...
They were just...
One of the things that was talking about was, um, safe harbor. And we're just talking about that we're not even close to the 10%, you know, factor. And we're not even close to the, it's actually 1.5%, from what I understand, not 1.4 of the land area that the 40B projects are on. We don't, we're not even close to that. And then the discussion came up that the state only allow 250 units, uh, for our project. Well, that's easy to say. But all you gotta do is take a 50-acre parcel of land and say, "I'm gonna subdivide that into five, 10-acre lots. You can put 250 on each one of those." So what I asked Ari to do was talk to you, to talk to Town Council. So we get this written up and get this, you know, finalized once and for all because it seems to be, discussion about this is just not, misinformation is just not right. Okay?
Keep it simple, yeah. But I, I mean, I think it would be just great to be able to have, you know, an accurate explanation, accurate. I mean, there's only, the numbers are only accurate until, you know, the next building permit is given out anyways because...
Well, they get, they get refreshed every 10 years.
Yeah.
And they just got refreshed, so.
Right.
On up 785 units, I think, Mark, somewhere in that area.
Yeah.
Over 10 years ago, so that's a significant jump.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was saying, we'll go here.
Right.
Six, not the half, to something left.
Yeah.
Four, four and a half, probably, somewhere in that area.
Yeah. But I think, um, I think it would be good to just be able to have that information and that way, you know, share it on the town's website. And if people are interested, they can go there and say, "Oh, okay, this is what they're talking about," so.
Anyway, so you might want to watch that planning board meeting when you get a chance.
I, I think I need to as well.
Yeah.
I would highly recommend you to do.
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion on any of these items? Questions? Okay. What's your name, sir?
Brian Wall.
Oh, Brian.
Hi, Brian.
I'm a founder and CEO of our soul.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to come in case you guys had any questions.
We're probably not at that point, but we're gonna talk about what we can do and what we can't do, okay?
Yeah.
That's the plan.
Are you moving on to that now?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, all right, so where are we here?
Number 14, which is real to number 16.
All right, I'm gonna choose myself in this discussion.
Okay, you don't have to hang around for the adjournment if you don't want to. That's why I did it.
Well, that's what you needed out of the board. I appreciate that.
Yep. Okay, so, uh... Okay, number 14, discuss a possible vote regarding retail cannabis applications. So, um, I don't know who wants to begin on this one because the state's really messed us up.
So Leah, do you want to do it or do you want me to do it?
Um, you can start, Ari.
Okay, um, so as you recall, we put out an RFI a little while back for a retail marijuana establishment. Um, we received three proposals, two retail and one for delivery establishment. We had a proposal subcommittee which consisted of myself, Board Member Fabian and our Town Council, and the pressel. We were the applicants in May to discuss the proposals. And we decided to pause recommendations pending the outcome of legislature, in the midst, in the depth of, the depths of the legislative discussion of what to do about cannabis. Um, so following adoption of the new law, we met once again to discuss next steps. The new law significantly alters the parameters for cannabis approval, specifically if it limits community impact fees to identifiable costs situated to approval by the CCC. It eliminates annual charitable contributions as a requirement in any host community agreements. As a result, practically speaking, the financial benefits of the town will be limited to the excise tax in the case of the retail establishments, along with any property tax revenue.
The legal part, I don't know.
Right. Along with any, you know, property tax or whatnot. Um, the, um, the committee, um, decided that, um, given that the kind of playing field's changed a bit, that it would make sense to go back to the full board or we had the board to discuss, um, uh, the, the approach going forward. Um, the, uh, the main question was whether there's still interest in proceeding. If there is, um, then the committee can come back with recommendations on, on what, uh, on what concerns we're proposing, you know, to, to award to and so on. Is that on the right, Leah?
Yep. Sounds about right.
Um, go ahead.
So we did meet with all three people. Of course, we, you know, we did the RFI before the state changed, changed the whole impact fee thing, so, um... So anyways, I guess it's up to you and I, Rich, to decide, you know, whether we want to do this, not want to, you know, um...
It's not a have-to-do, that's for sure.
Right, it's not a have-to-do by any means.
Open the door to cannabis in town anyway, so.
Right.
Well, I think there's a couple of things. First of all, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, we're very restricted to the industrial park, our industrial, the, uh, Lakeville-owned industrial park. And we're restricted to the industrial park out on 44.
On Harding Street.
And the properties in that area? Or is it just that area? You don't know off the top of your head?
I don't.
Okay. Well, I know it's very restrictive in either case, you know, so, um, there's an overlay district that was, uh, passed and I don't know exactly when that was done off the top of my head.
I think it was, uh, 2021 annual meeting.
Okay, so we're restricted from that standpoint, okay? So if you look at our current industrial park, outside of existing buildings, there is no space... Uh, I'll take that back. There's still some space beside Talbot's, depending upon what Talbot's does with that. But other than that, I don't see any other space in the industrial park unless you're gonna use an existing building, which is being done. So we're in a situation where the previous board in 2017 and 2018, right? They just, they signed seven, uh, host community agreements. Only two of those agreements are in function today. Bundle for Farms and Nature's Remedy. And supposedly Northeast Alternative is gonna go forward. But those others have really disappeared. They haven't done anything. And those were all cultivation, um, facilities. They weren't retail. They were cultivation facilities. So if you look at the situation today, what the legislature just passed on July 31st, the last day of the session, as usual, and then they ran away, that, um, outside of retail, they've lifted all the restrictions having to do with impact fees, except the 3% excise tax, I believe it is. And if I'm saying something wrong, speak up.
Sales tax.
Sales tax, thank you. The three, the local 3% sales tax for retail only. So all the cultivation, we... Yeah, all the cultivation facilities, we don't get nothing but property taxes. That's it.
We are getting, we are currently getting an impact fee, but that impact fee is a subject of dispute. And it would go away once this, once the current HCAs are done.
Which is, most of them are expiring in '22, '23.
Yeah.
And then the, um, um, there's a lot of uncertainty in terms of where, whither the, um, the charitable contributions because they're just not allowed. And, um, the, uh, the CCC, whether CCC's gonna grandfather that or just say, or rule not is unclear at this point.
So the first question is, without getting talked, the ones we're talking about are retail here, that why should we do any more cultivation if we're not gonna get any impact fees?
Well, cultivation is probably no reason to, other than, unless, unless, you know... I mean, there are a number of issues and that's not really, it's not necessarily germane to what we have before us tonight, but the, um, I mean, we're running so many issues with a certain cultivation facility that I think that, you know, just the water consumption question is massive and, and that, that poses a lot of, a lot of issues for us. But that's, I don't know if that's totally relevant to this discussion.
So I guess the, um, I, we're gonna have to make this decision pretty soon because I, there's something in the contract, I wish I had all the contracts with me. I had a folder, I forgot to bring it. That the contracts have to be renegotiated, I think, within a year of their expiration date. And there's at least two of them or three of them. And some of them, we don't even know what they're doing. We're certainly not gonna renew anybody that's not doing anything. I mean, you know, that doesn't make any sense at all. But, so that's, that's an issue, um, that's gonna be facing us pretty quickly.
Yep.
And, and that's another discussion for another day, what we do. And we still haven't got the answer whether we can ask for mitigation from these companies as property owners or whatever. That's still up in the air, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Is that correct?
I, yes, I'm with you and I actually agree with everything that you're saying.
All right, so the question now is the retail seems to be the one because I'm gonna tell you, you know, the agreements that we have hasn't generated a lot of, a lot of money for the town.
Right.
There's, there's two, two agreements in place, one for Bundle for Farms and one for Nature's Remedy.
Now known as Juicy.
I'm sorry, they changed the name to Juicy. They're bought out by Juicy. And they only generate $200,000.
Right.
You know, so what are we doing?
Juicy generates before the vast majority of them.
Right. I think they're 150 and somewhere in that area. So that's gonna be coming to a head very, very shortly, whether we should even renew them at all.
Right.
Okay, that's that.
Yep.
You want to talk about the retail ones now?
Um, yeah, so, um, sorry?
You need any?
No. So, um, I'm less inclined on the delivery-only one, but I do think the delivery-only was gonna give us some... was going to give us some sales tax though. Wasn't that correct, Ari?
Well, they're all going to give us excise tax.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I don't know, something about the delivery, um, one just, you know, um, I would, it's just me, but I would like to see a retail facility, but I'm torn between the two that we received because they're almost going to be-
You have two that are-
Yeah.
Pretty next door to each other.
Not going to be next door to each other and I don't want to set anyone up for failure either, so, um, so, you know, um, that being said.
I don't have any problem with retail either.
Yeah, I, you know.
It's isolated.
Right.
And it's going to be out on forty-four.
Yeah.
You know, and there's already one out there for sure.
Yeah.
Middle Borough's one.
Yep.
I don't have a problem with it at all.
Yep.
And they want to compete against each other? Go for it.
Um, so I, I actually, you know, wouldn't, I wouldn't mind seeing a retail facility. I think that, you know, lots of folks here are going to Middle Borough and Middle Borough's reaping that reward. Maybe we can make it convenient for our own residents to have one in Lakeville. But, you know, I don't know what those host community agreements look like though because of everything that's gone on in the legislature.
I would note that the, the delivery, um, the delivery concern is aligned with, um, one, one of the, um, one of the cultivation licenses that has not become operational.
Right.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
The Twisted Growers.
Well, I think that's another important issue.
Yeah.
Is that the, uh, the host community agreements that the previous board signed, there was no end dates, no accountability. It said, you're going to do this by, you know, a year or whatever, get it approved by the, by the state and they're just open-ended.
Yeah.
And they're still-
No, I, I think it's much-
At least four of them are open-ended at this point, right?
Yeah, I, I think it would be better if we had some, you know, final, you have to be operational by, you know, whatever.
So, I don't know, do we start by having Amy draft up a, without determining who yet, a, a draft, um, uh, a, a host community agreement for retail?
I can speak with her, that's fine.
Yeah.
We can work on that.
I mean, you know, we talked a lot about what is allowed now, what isn't allowed, what we don't know about, so I guess, you know, we, we have to take sort of a, you know, and, and Ari and I didn't feel like we should ask her to do that without at least you and I, you know, talking about it. Um, I just didn't want to unilaterally make that decision, so I, I wouldn't mind seeing a retail facility. If you agree, Rich, then I think we start with having council create some kind of a host community agreement and, you know.
Okay, we do that and then the next process then it would be that we, um, uh, if it's one or two companies, I don't know, uh, we could bring, it sounds like the delivery one we don't want to do.
I think I wouldn't.
Okay.
I think on that one, I, yeah, there was, um, you know, and, and I don't, um...
I, I don't think you awarded delivery concerns to, to, to a, uh, to one that's not, to, to, to the line of ones not even operating.
I wasn't as impressed with, um, I don't want to say security, but, you know, um, I, I just feel like these other two are much more, um, impressive.
Well, those security issues certainly would be addressed by the, uh, police-
Yeah, police chief, yeah.
And no matter what.
And you know what? In the, in the interviews, all three companies though said that they would have no problem, you know, coordinating, talking to the police chief and, you know.
Probably part of the next step. I think it was going to be a little while, I mean, talk to town council about drafting.
Yeah.
And same time, start the work with, um, with police.
Yeah.
Well, I, I also think it's important that, uh, like I said, having the approval of the cannabis commission. I mean, I know sometimes they've been dragging their feet.
Yeah.
But I mean, some of them is totally ridiculous. It doesn't necessarily means the cannabis commission is causing the problem. It's the, the owner of the, uh-
Right.
And I think that that needs to be addressed in the HCA, so we say, hey,
Yeah.
you're the new something by, you know, whatever the day is.
I'm still putting together annual impact fee letters for, um, uh, for licensees that they have to report to this back to the CCC that have not even come close to operation.
Right.
Like Bud's Goods, that kind of thing. Uh, I, I, it's, it's, you know, to quantify the impact, the, the cost supporting the, the impact fees, we even collect, you know, it's, it makes no sense. It's, it's like a Potemkin Theater more than anything else.
Yeah.
Well, I think it might be a good idea that we know that at least, at least one of them, the two of them are coming up.
Yeah.
Next year for sure.
Yeah.
And maybe one of them this year.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I can report back on that also.
Reorganize my file.
So, and basically say, hey, you know, you're not going to do anything. We notified the cannabis commission that it's been completely inactive. Why do we continue with this process?
Yeah, but I think we asked council the question, can we give HCA to both and if they can decide if they want to compete, it's up to them, so.
We can, I mean, it's entirely up to them.
Yep, yep.
And we'll put it right next to them.
We end up with, we end up with what you did with cultivation too.
Yeah. So, um, if you agree, Rich, then that gives us something, you know, you can talk to Amy about drafting, you know, um, an HCA and then we can, well, we can start there and then we can respond to, you know, the applicants.
Okay, um, you're here, Brian, you're welcome to ask any questions.
Yep, so the donation can't be in the HCA, but, but it can be, but I could agree to donate money, just like we sponsor the Halifax fireworks.
Yes.
And we're going to have a five-year agreement with them.
Right.
So it's outside of our HCA. We put speed signs on Route one oh six outside of our C, HCA.
Yeah.
So we can't put it in the HCA.
That we can't leave you.
But we can make a commitment to the town either to donate extra to the rec department or something like that, as long as it's not in the HCA.
Well, what you do of your own volition is your own business, we cannot require it.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
And we, and that's something we would be, you know,
Yeah.
happy to do, um, same thing.
Yeah, I think in your-
We are saying to Amy about the impact fee, I look at the three percent as a procedural business, like I want to be a good community person. You know, we're actually working with Halifax Council to see if we can make it be six percent of gross profit, not to exceed three percent of gross sales. You know, in the line about it can't, about, uh, impact to the town is really bad because it doesn't say it has to equal that, it's kind of thrown in there.
Yeah.
So we've written to the CCC, asking them to clarify that language because if we agree to pay a percentage of gross profit, not to exceed three percent of gross sales, we're compliant with the new rules. Um, and again, there are people fighting the three percent. I look at it as, I want to be part of the community, like I build it into my business model. And then we would commit, as we mentioned in our document that we first submitted in October of last year to, to the town and again in our presentation,
Yeah.
that we would commit to opening in within a year, otherwise we would stop paying our fees. I opened it eleven months in Halifax. So by the time I got my HCA, we think we can do it faster because we've already got everything submitted to the state. So I changed Halifax to be Lakeville. Um, you know, not that easy, but fairly easy, right? I mean, buildings are similar size. Um, and then from a security standpoint, just from your standpoint, we have thirty-seven cameras and seventeen hundred square meters.
Right.
So it's not, you know, there's not a piece of one oh six or around the building that in, uh, in, so, you know, we'd love to be part of the town, you know, we've been, you know, paying into the town since October of last year. Um, and we'd love to start the process, um, and if your process allows us and we were, you know, when we were able to HCA with you, we would actually build that risk, to open quicker. So why are we going through the permitting process? And we're at E Harding Street. So the town has specific lots. It's not just industrial, but in your bylaw, you listed exact lots.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah.
And so I think it's about fifteen lots maybe, something like that split, but yeah, we're at E Harding and we're, the building under control, we've right about the building. So, um, you know, we just want to grow up the town if there's possible.
Okay, we'll get back to you shortly, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Tim, do you have a timeline when you're thinking?
I, I would like to see this in the next couple of weeks if possible.
I don't know if we're going to turn around that fast.
Yeah.
Yeah, but Amy said it would take her a little bit too. She had to do some research just exactly on the stuff that you're talking about, what, you know.
And we're going to be, we're going to be, we're going to be all hands on deck. We need the town meeting too.
Yeah, but, you know, we can certainly start the process here. Yeah? Okay?
Okay?
Sound good?
You all set, Mark?
Yes, sir.
No, thanks for coming by.
Entertained motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second. All is in favor?